Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 4th meeting of the Barrington Planning Board. Let's start with a roll call attendance.
Succi.
Happy Hello.
Just go on.
Just you. Present. Yeah. And I will, I'm, so everyone knows I'm appointing Don Succi is a member this evening. Looking for review and approval of the minutes. Anybody have any items, corrections?
I have a correction, a correction, I think. The under article will be the zoning. I think you changed it after the question that you were talking about. Says maybe operate on two seventy. On two seventy. Article eight, so maybe operators by only one non-resident. I would suggest we change that they employ only one non-resident. That would be consistent with the language in the home business.
I'm sorry, what?
Two seventy three.
Two seventy three.
Okay. This part of the meeting, we can amend that at our next meeting. Because I mean, our next work session, our work session, we'll be working with that. But I'll make a note on here to change it to.
May only one non-resident. That's consistent with.
Maybe.
May, may employ only one non-resident. Because the minutes is supposed to reflect what happened at the meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, so then we can, I'll make sure that's changed.
One plus one.
Right?
Right.
It's true.
May, may employ only one non-resident.
You can add that to it.
I'll change that for the.
It's just in the home business line.
Okay. I'll have that changed for our.
We're launching a quick remarks. Taking a look at where you can pull this in from the tables.
No second. Go ahead, Bob.
That's right. Question by Ron Howard. Somebody else said it, so I know. John, second. Mr. Driscoll, second. Roll call vote. Succi.
Happy Hello.
Driscoll.
Just you're up. On extension of this. Okay, two thirty-five dash one dot one, and then three dash TC dash twenty-one dash SR slash LL. The nine point six owner of Development Group. The applicant here. Yes. Anything we'd like to remember?
Yes.
Step one, yeah, number four.
If we, I'll come back to it in just a second. I'll. Anything that you would present or would like to present?
If the board has any questions, I know Chris Berry presented or put together a narrative for where we're at with the project. And if anybody has questions, I'll let Eric have an answer. One part of the narrative that I think he mentioned in, in his notes was what in our community water system. We've drilled two wells. The wells are producing enough water, a great, actually a great capacity. And we have a water system that's been designed, been submitted to the state, and has preliminary approval. And I'm not sure that was mentioned in there. Typically, it takes about a year anyways for a water system. Maybe to watch the efficiency.
Oh, wow.
I make a motion we'd rather run your extension for application two thirty-five dash one dot one, and three dash TC dash twenty-one down inside.
I'll second, I'll second that. Go calls. Do you have what you need, Barbara?
Yep. Thank you.
That by.
Alan.
Just you're up.
Driscoll.
Happy Hello. Succi.
Would anybody have mind, if I skip out of order for one more, because we have one more person who's requesting an continuance? And just to wrap that up, so we don't have a bond from it. So you know, they usually go like, you get these are. Those items. Item B, I'm sorry, what's that?
So for the item for item B, that's different question.
Two thirty-nine dash one dot one dash TC dash twenty-one dash two sub. The owners, David and Glenda Henderson. There is, we submitted today, Dear Mr. Bryce, members of the planning board, Attorney Worth. Above caption matters on the planning board agenda, we have my clients, David, David Darby, Darby, David Nelson. We requested the hearing for tonight's agenda, as well as David and Henderson. Requested by Attorney Gregory Worth, all jointly request that the mechanism in tonight's agenda be continued until the planning towards November. So. Derek.
Who's November being?
The first.
The first?
The first November.
I made the motion, we continue two thirty-nine dash one dot one dash TC dash twenty-one dash two to the November first meeting.
I'll second that.
Succi.
Happy Hello.
Driscoll.
Just you're up.
Alan.
Stepping back in the agenda to eliminate conceptual study. The owner and applicant for Town Center's property LLC, presenting a conceptual live discussion with the board.
If you have, Mr. Care, members of the board. Sorry.
So you've learned.
Thank you. Thank you for sitting tonight. My name is FX Breach Time, Breach Time and Breathing. Apartment, yeah, properties. This been tonight is Bob, Bud Meter, and please here if you have any questions. We're here tonight on a very, a fundamental conceptual review. It's basically a very informal discussion. In that process, we don't expect that anything you say would be binding in terms of us eventually coming back for our full site plan review. Likewise, even though I will try and be as accurate as I can. Things will most likely change a little bit in terms of how we get to the final design. But we wanted to come to you first and walk you through what we think we might be able to do on a fairly significant size. This property, one thing I said in my application is it's twelve acres, so I wanted to correct that. It's about a little bit over the thirteen. So my secretary is taking care of it in terms of that. It's an exciting project. If you, obviously, I think you guys all know the area. It's the intersection of one twenty-five and Route Nine. It's behind Kale's. It's behind the post office. It's adjacent to the elementary school. You know, Knight's garage is in the front, so that kind of puts you where you, where you're at. Just for simplicity, even though you have this plan, I did bring up this plan. And if, if you want me to turn it to the public, I'm happy to do that. But I did put a. I did put this up just really kind of just to describe where we're at. And use it to kind of just walk through the project. As you know, this zone was created after quite a bit of review. And if you don't have the history, in about two thousand and seven, there was a lot of discussion about creating a town-centered area in the town. And at the time, there was a concept plan, which I'm going to refer to, and I'll, I'll hand out copies of that. But it talked about a fairly dense area and activities for recreation. Things that might be available for the town as well to construct or consider either recreational facilities or public use facilities, things like bandstands, parks, things of that nature. The good thing is, I think what we did is we calculated what the essence of that idea and plan would or could be in terms of what we came up with. So I'm just going to kind of go through this. Again, just as a point of reference, one twenty-five is here and Route Nine is here. Excuse me. So we're kind of in the, we're in the back area here. And Knight's garage is around here, and the post office is over here, and the elementary school is over here. So basically, we consulted a lot of individuals with respect to what could we do with this area? And one of the needs that we understood, particularly from the parties that sold the parcel, particularly Mrs. Kalef, was that they'd like to see this property utilized for the benefit of elderly people. So with that in mind, and with a couple other parameters in mind, talking to some of the professionals with respect to how to kind of come up with a concept for that, we came up with the following. And I want to just first show you that this is an area that is carved out. This is a Kalef property, so this is not part of the project. So we kind of wrap around here. We have access over here to Route Nine. Land Row Road, and there is a access lane to highway. What this essentially is, is a medical office, a one-story medical office, daycare in this area. And then two buildings. One is with respect to independent elderly living, and the other is with respect to more assisted living. And we have designed a spot with sixty-two units in one building and thirty-two units in the other. What we also provided is an area that will probably be up for quite a bit of discussion. But we thought it would be nice to at least start by showing a fenced-in area, which could obviously be something else. Or an area and/or an area for tennis courts and pickleball. These are things that were picked on the plan. But the way the town center ordinance is set up is these are reserved, and then the town would come in and really decide what they might want to do and put that, put those structures in. Again, depending on what the town might want to flesh out in terms of the use and the need. So beyond this parcel, but it would be improvements that would relate to what the town really is looking to do. So obviously, that's going to be a lot more discussion. The reason, one of the reasons for here is to obviously show this to you and kind of walk through it. But the other reason is the town center basically has a restriction of one unit per acre. This is thirteen acres, so roughly thirteen units. Obviously, we're not proposing. The other issue is there's a limitation on building height to forty feet. And although we could do that with the three-story buildings that we have, we'd like to have some architectural motifs, some legal motifs that would be the part that would exceed that. So we're not looking to go up in terms of residential floors. But we're going to have to ask the ZBA for the form of relief. So we wanted to kind of throw that out to you on a conceptual basis, again, not non-binding at all. And just pretty much understand what your thoughts are with respect to the following, which is we'd like to make this a town center, and it's in the town center district. And in order to have a town center, you have to have people. If thirteen people are brought around here, I don't think that's really what you envisioned. And so that's the premise of this, is to not only create those two buildings that address that need with respect to elderly housing and elderly care, but to come up with that community, that center, if you will. What I want to show you is what happened when the town came together to kind of come up with this concept of what this area should be. And if you keep this mental picture in mind, you'd be kind of surprised, because I think that's pretty similar to what the town was looking at in two thousand and seven. What I'm going to do, I'll do it, is show you a plan that comes out of the visioning statement in two thousand and seven. In fact, I have copies of that that I'll send around as well, so you can see it a little bit more clearly. Actually, I'll just send that right. So even though the town center has kind of evolved into a one acre per unit zone. It started out with a concept, and what I did here was I highlighted, because this doesn't show the property lines. I highlighted one twenty-five and Route Nine. And so if you see that, you can readily see that on your plan. But again, it's, it's basically right here. This is Route Nine, and this is one twenty-five. What you'll see is multiple buildings. You'll see senior housing. You'll see greens, town greens, ball fields, recreational facilities. You'll see a dense area. This is exactly what you were looking at in terms of coming up with town center. It makes, obviously, it makes a tremendous amount of sense to have a more clustered, dense area that kind of, you know, comes, comes to look more like the village that I think, I think this town would like to see. Again, what we did was we complemented our senior living with a medical office. And then you have the daycare, which is close by to the elementary school as well. So we think it fits well. And John, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we first thought about this concept, and it's very broad brushstrokes, I think there was a sense that if we had commercial uses in each unit, then I don't think we were restricted with respect to the number of units.
The construction.
Right. So we don't think it works well to put these uses within the building, because we're also restricted by the height. But in a general sense, we're accomplishing exactly what that provision would allow, which is we're not building just residential. We're building a facility that would be, and I'll go back to the plan. Building a potential facility that would have a medical office, which is obviously commercial, a daycare, the same thing. And even though this would be independent living at thirty-two units, here at sixty-two, when you say assisted living, you're really talking about a commercial kind of enterprise. You know, you're going to have people taking care of people, and they're going to be earning money. So that's really a commercial enterprise to begin with. So we really don't think this is much of a stretch to say, well, we could do that if we, if we put these uses on the first floor. We pretty much have those uses on this property in general. It's just how it's laid out. And looking at it in terms of what you looked at in two thousand and seven, it really fits in. It dovetails nicely, I think. And so we're, we're looking for your general sense of how we're approaching this, because it's important to us to take that feedback. But we are going to go to the ZBA. We're not asking you to obviously grant any relief. But we'd like to know that you look at this, and you see it, and you like it, or you don't. And then we'll have a better sense of what we're saying as well in front of the ZBA. But I think it makes sense in terms of putting together this concept of we could be doing this if we had pushed commercial uses in here, these being the commercial uses. This is really a commercial use in my sense. But we want to have enough residential use to make this plan work. We want to have people. And again, I think when you say town center, you think of needing people in order to have a town center, not just thirteen units. So I appreciate you listening to me. We're here to, I'm here to kind of go back and forth if you have any questions. But I, that's the purpose of tonight, is to kind of start to introduce this concept and see how you feel about it. And again, everything you say for us is non-binding. We understand that. We just want to get a sense of where you're at, what you think. And hopefully, we can come together to create a plan that really works for Barrington in this very important area, this crosshairs, if you will, one twenty-five and nine. So, thank you.
I could clarify a couple of things. I come up with a little different density than you did. If you go to definitions from like assisted living and elder care.
Yep.
Branch the note fifteen, which is from John on page ninety-six. Now, that'll give you one bedroom unit for every ten thousand square feet. So that gives you a little more density.
Yeah.
But because of the PUD, I based it on the twelve acres, because that's what the chance might have to be now. That's not shown. I didn't realize it's thirteen there when you actually surveyed it. Well, based on that, because of the PUD, you can do twenty-five percent residential, which would be the standard one units, and then the assisted care is actually a commercial use. So you can use fifty percent of the lot for that, because you got to have the twenty-five percent city use. So that would give you twenty-six units on that assisted care, and it would give you thirteen units for the residential use. That's how it worked out the way I read the zoning.
Yeah.
Which is a little more yours, but it's way less than what you're asking for.
Right.
But it's just to help clarify, the numbers are a little closer than what yours sounds.
That's great. I still ask for clarification. Thank you.
I'm here from the board.
Well, I mean, I'll start. I mean, I, I think there's some issues, as you said, with the letter law. I think the spirit and intent is, is good. I think the density downtown to make it, to help the downtown businesses is what we need. I think the fact that, you know, the commercial and the residential over different buildings, I don't, I see that as a plus. I know it doesn't follow the letter law, but I like that concept. The only concerns that I kind of, or objections, one is we're trying to make, you know, a walkable thing, and I like to see more sidewalks and things like that.
Right.
Number two, you know, there's only one entrance, and you're talking fifty-five assisted living. Maybe another entrance in case a tree falls or something like that.
Yeah, just, just three. Yeah, there's, there's three. There's one over here. There's one here.
Less than okay.
Yeah, and there's one here, and there's, this isn't really a public entrance, but I mean, we could work with that too. So it's a.
A big place for sidewalk. Yeah, the only other concern I have is the coverage, maximum coverage, coverage, you know, is sixty percent, and it's pretty bottom in progress surface there. So you have to pay attention to that.
Okay, that's good. Great. I think, thank you. That's helpful to us. Yours?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify. So on the public space, so you have pickup ball, tennis courts, various things here. But really, that's up to the town to build.
Right. And, and we also have, and I'll bring it back, but just to show you, we have kind of this whole area that we're looking at for that purpose. It says bandstand, but it could be something else. But, you know, we understand that's the town also having to go through a process, saying whatever we want.
Right. And what you have for.
In zoning, where it talks about the twenty-five percent civic use.
Right.
Because of it being a PUD.
Right.
So that town could take the rec, go in there and build something out with some of their funds or, you know, that kind of deal. But the civic use doesn't have to, it says civic use slash open space. It can be open space, or it could be developed by the town as a civic use.
Right.
Or even an individual could come in and say, we'd like to build this for the town and put it there on that space, because it would be a civic use.
And now, a lot of people, developers, would say, okay, well, I'm going to put these in, but I'm going to restrict the use. And that's not what we're looking to do. So this is more public use areas as well. So I think that fits in nicely with what.
Right, but without any financial contribution, rather than other than the open space.
Right.
About septic?
We, there's probably a really good answer for that. We will. Let's hope so. I don't have it, but when we come back full site plan, we'll have that answer. I, I think this is done with, we had assistance with engineering. So I think the concept that we'll be able to handle that. I mean, have to, obviously, and loading and all that as well.
The Northeast Credit Union in Lee has theirs under a parking lot. And the sign, the stanchions supporting the sign are actually the vent pipes. So there's ways to work around that. Yeah. Well, that's why the sign is high. Yeah.
So.
So just don't put it under the town part.
My general thoughts on it are, and I'll be very, very frank, I think it misses the mark of the town center. And I say that because, and this is my personal opinion of it, I think it will be a vast wasteland for the most part of where people are there for work purposes, but they are not hanging out and commuting there. It doesn't have anything that draws anybody to the area or any sort of restaurant, shopping, purchasing, doing, doing anything other than going to potentially a medical office, which is open, you know, from eight AM to five PM. And the playground that's there will be largely untouched, because it will be reserved for the school. So the, the daycare or nursery school or whatever you want to call it is there. So that won't be open to the public for the most part, because that's going to be fenced in and enclosed. And the residential piece, you're going to have residents there that walk out of their house and have almost nowhere to go. And I don't know if you've ever watched an older person, they're, if they're living in assisted living, they're not walking large stretches over to Kale's Country Store or across the street to George Kale's Fine Foods or someplace like that.
Which gets you five plus.
Right.
It's a little pretty old.
Well, that's where.
I mean, most of us.
Yeah, my response is I could fit here, being over fifty-five. And I think this is going to be a lot more vibrant than it looks on this piece of paper. And I think it's going to be more vibrant in terms of the community when they do go to Kale's, which I would like to do, and I do too. And when I do go to the other Kale's and Milos and all that, I mean, these are things that I like to do. But we also have to keep in mind kind of what the original intent was, which when I showed you, it's, you know, senior living was one of those. And there are other areas being developed that, that create those opportunities for those living experiences. But again, if you know fifty-five and older, it's really, the way that really works is it's eighty, eighty percent of the units have to have at least one person who's fifty-five and older. So it's not going to be geriatric land over here. But we want to create something that does address people who actually have elder care issues. So that's why this is over here segregated from that. But it's, it's, I understand your point, and again, this is exactly why we're here, to understand that and see if we can work with that.
But I think, you know, you have restaurants, you got to have the density, you got to. There wasn't, the restaurants we have in downtown now, wasn't a turbo camp. I don't think they'd be doing very well at all. I mean, think of the lunchtime grounds for Milos and places like that. If it was just a town going down there, it'd probably less than happen what they see now. They probably get a lot from turbo camp. So I think you need that population density to support these, but they may not be the business themselves, but we need the population.
I, I agree, but that was the targeted aspect of having commercial with residential above it, is that you create density while also creating function. And this does the, really accomplish that. I think the medical office building and the daycare are all great options, but I think you're missing the market in downtown center. When you talk about the idea of bringing people in and having people that utilize the space, it will be an empty space for the most part on the weekends, with the exception of the people that live there. It's like. It's, it's going to be an interesting discussion in terms of, a very large chunk of this is going to be our discussion kind of really about all what you just said. Other than, you know, yes, we're not really showing a restaurant within here, but obviously, there are restaurants around this area. But this can really activate and hopefully can address what you're talking about and what the town might be looking for. I think it's a great start in terms of a lot of flex. We're interested in those ideas, and I, and I understand what you're saying, and I'm not arguing against you. I'm just getting a sense of what is, what you're looking at. What I am interested in, what Mr. Aller just mentioned, was I need to go to the ZBA and say, whatever John and I come up with as the final way of how we do this, that's probably not going to be enough in terms of what we need to do to create the infrastructure and get the people in this area. Again, this would be a very vibrant little spot. It's not, you know, again, limiting it to fifty-five and older really is broader than most people think. This would be assisted, for sure. And then this is all going to be kind of upper grabs in terms of what eventually happens.
It could be drawing people in. That piece could be drawing people in. It's fully pickable, it's best gone spotted.
Yeah, you'd probably get rid of the tennis courts and put more pickleball in.
I, we could elevate and have six floors, and I'm sure that's. But I mean, one thing to keep in mind is when I look at that is, yeah, that's great, but somebody's got to fund it, which means you've got to ask every resident in town to cough up more money to go fund building that up. And it's not just building it up, but it's the ongoing maintenance.
Recreation department would be doing that. Recreation department would be doing that, they, they're really the funding.
The recreational departments doing that, they made no commitment to doing this.
Right, but. Well, no, they have, but it falls within the purview.
And you have bocce courts behind an independent living facility. Are those covered by the development or is that something that's expected to be funded? Right, I mean, I think, I think we, we understand your concern and we, you know, obviously we'll get to full site plan. Every question will be answered. But, um, let's kind of in context, look at the town created. An ordinance where they said, we want twenty five percent set aside for either open space or public use. That's what we're doing. But the town did that so that they can then go do X, Y and Z, whatever that is. Um, so they set that up and we're basically saying, yeah, okay, all right, we'll do that. So we're saying yes to the ordinance. The town will come in and address those issues of how do we do this now? We set this thing up and now we have it and someone's agreed to do it and now what do we do? The, the, again, the, the thing I need to do next is say, okay, this number, whatever it is. We need a little bit more and it's gonna be for, uh, for these purposes and to create this area. But again, the town will, um, then go and say, okay, so what did what we wanted now? And I presume there will be an answer, it'll be a good one, but. I mean, do we not think like a seventy percent increase above what is? In terms of the, uh, numbers?
Yes.
I, I don't, well, again, I'm not asking you to, uh, take the decision, but I think John expressed that our numbers. Are perceived to be low and at least the allowed uses.
I'm basing it off the allowed uses.
Yeah, I don't know that that's seven.
So I did, if you take that, the assisted living thing, cause that's commercial.
Yep.
By our regulations. Uh, and you can do fifty percent commercial on the lot and it says you can have ten thousand for one bedroom unit. So if you take fifty percent of that, um, twelve acres I use, so you take six acres. And you divide it by the ten thousand, it comes up to twenty six units. And that unit there. So then, then you get thirteen for the residential and the water for that twenty five there.
Yep.
Right, so that'd give you thirteen in the residential and twenty six.
And they're looking.
Assistant living.
They're like ninety four units.
Yeah, so I mean, there is, there is a substantial profit difference.
Yeah, but I think that, you know, one of the good things I see on this, I'll start you, I know you want me first, but, you know, this is commercial property and this is fifty five plus. This helps our tax base, this puts, you know, increases, uh, property taxes and probably doesn't put any kids in school. Cause fifty five plus, so this is, this is, this is very good for the tax base.
If you look at the demographics when they were done in the master plan, um, more than eighty percent of the town is fifty five plus. For the demographics today for residential homes. So that density in that fifty five and over is no different than your residential subdivisions.
Joyce?
Uh, yes, I wanted to make a comment that, um, the town is updating its master plan in terms of land use and transportation. And some of the survey questions that are going out in the next couple of weeks to residents are, under the land use. Would be very pertinent to what you're thinking about in terms of that open space use. Um, so that may be very helpful to this discussion. And the second comment I had in terms of the assisted living, many of the assisted living facilities I've seen have an internal garden. So it's sometimes a little easier for residents to scoot into an internal and you're not worrying about somebody wandering.
Yeah, and those are good points and we can definitely look at incorporating that kind of concept in this design. Again, it's, it's preliminary, um, we'll look at that and adjust our numbers. But we will be going at some way, at some point, uh, for some level of increase over the numbers that John just mentioned. But, uh, again, it's to support the entire development in terms of, so it's a large undertaking.
If you attempted to put commercial on the first floor, the demand for parking would be overwhelmed the site.
Yeah, and that was one of the concerns in terms of how, what is this? You know, this is not a baseball field where hundreds of people.
Right.
And so the concept is similar in terms of, you know, we have spaces enough for the units. Um, are we, um, then exacerbating that issue, you know, or again, is this enough? Or that part of what we're trying to do? And then all of the other infill restaurants start to come online.
Mix of, um, residential and assisted living affixed by the numbers. Pretty much, I mean, you mean you couldn't increase the more walkable fifty five year old plus people that some people were talking.
Look at it, but you can't create a, um, a care structure, um, for, you know, ten units. And I know that's an exaggeration.
Oh, yeah.
But there's a breaking point in terms of how you get to.
Yeah.
What you need in order to create the care, uh, component.
Right.
So we'll, we'll look at, we'll look at all that and that's, it's a good point again. To, um, understand exactly what we need and what the final ask will be.
Right.
So.
And the public benefit is all the sidewalks you're putting like along Malago and so forth.
We did add those, uh, to this plan, but obviously, you know, again, we're coming back here for, for sure, obviously. And, and you guys will have time to say what that looks like.
Is there anybody that, um, care unit, first one, um, can not be three stories? I mean, it, all I see is a complex, um, from experience from my own mother that was in one of those. It became a, um, it wasn't a nice place to visit or to be in after a while. More, she was moved to a, you know, community that was safe. They were like little bungalows next to each other. They also had it surrounded, it was like around. And a courthouse, all their, their, you know, togetherness was right in the middle.
Yeah.
Where they had little gardens and everything.
And thi- this is just, um, you know, it's a thirteen acres, but it's kind of more in the compact zone or in that, that. I say urban zone, but you know, uh, center zone, if you will. So I think based on the limitations of the site. And the, the need to again, have that cost benefit work so that we can actually have care providers enough to, uh, support, you know. Having them, we have to have a certain number of units. Um, so I, I think we'll probably end up asking for three stories. Um, how that is configured, uh, inside garden lots or things of that nature is maybe a different issue. But I think they've looked at and discussed that with some, um, people that know how those assisted facilities work. And they kind of need a certain amount of critical mass to get, uh, to get, uh, to take, you know, be able to take care of. But, but again, um, the, this is why we're here. I'm not saying no to anything, I'm just trying to understand what you're saying, we're gonna talk about it. But generally, I do think in that issue, that's probably gonna be where we end up asking.
Did you say you had a real, I'm sorry?
I was just gonna say, and the same would, you still intending to ask for relief on a three story apartment building? Only with respect to making it New England motif and when we could do flat buildings, but just as.
We don't want flat buildings.
We, we don't want those and we want this to look good. So there would be, there's no request, oftentimes those requests are to create more, uh, residential units or living units. We're not looking to do that. Uh, if there's a need to go above the forty feet, would only be with respect to, um, aesthetics, roofs, you know, keeping that.
Did you say you had a, an example of your earlier design?
I didn't, but, um, what I.
I mean, I saw it online at one point, um, it looked like a cookie cutter strip mall.
Okay, I.
Yeah.
Apologize, I.
There were two entrances and a series of small like fast food restaurants and everything, so I'm not sure that's.
Someone else looking at that.
Yeah. Right after Town Center took it over, it came out.
I couldn't.
Compared to what that looked like, this is a lot better, in my opinion.
Overall, I like the concept and I think to just entities with all those Knights property currently for sale. I think it's concept like this, it's gonna draw somebody in to Knights property to do more of a commercial aspect.
Yeah, that, that's close to the road, so they'll probably pull in the cars, yeah, right.
So I, like, I wasn't, and I can comment, I wasn't here in oh seven, but I remember in two thousand. Fourteen, sitting through the visioning where they came back and looked at it. And I remember when I got, when I ran for select, when I went on a select, where I spent a lot of time. Reading all of the visioning documents, so I understood what they were looking for. And the whole point, the whole concept around it is a downtown walkable, mixed use piece. And to an aspect, I think this hits it, but I, but I think a big part of it misses it. And if you go back and look at all the commentary and the comments that were laid out in it and the original conversation. There was a lot of talk about having a downtown center that actually invited people in and brought people together. As community and functioned that way. And I, I don't, my personal opinion is I don't think this accomplishes that.
But I al- I also don't see in today's world that being accomplished anywhere on an economic sense for the developer.
No, I think it can be.
I mean, I, I think it, if you look at the, the development, which is, yeah, this commercial property is on the bottom. I think it will be, it makes the options for that, those units way, way better with this situation right here. I think that starts the mesh. I don't know that you have the commercial on this property, but I think it, it brings commercial opportunities to the area. Which is I think what we're trying to do.
But again, these are, these are excellent comments and I, I understand what you're saying. Um, so again, I don't think what, uh, those comments relate to necessarily. Uh, make this concept or this concept bad in the sense, but, um, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. So we will, uh, you know, discern what you guys are talking about tonight. Um, but we will go to the ZBA, see how that goes and then obviously wanna come back and, you know, work through all the details with this group. I would appreciate, uh, everything that you've provided tonight, it's very helpful.
I, I want to comment, it looks like the public part where you have the tennis courts and pickleball as an example. Is pretty close to the expanded, um, parking lot that was just expanded.
Yeah.
So where public would have.
Yeah, you're kinda down here, right? Yes.
Yeah, next to Elf.
Just down below. Yeah, so that's an, yeah, I, I meant to mention.
The town does have access to more land there too, if they need to.
And you would put in a trailer or sidewalk or something.
Think the parking bigger.
And you're showing the public, uh, gardens where they, people can do their gardening, right there.
There are some existing.
Which is right there.
Yeah, there, yes.
Right behind Elf, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So it doesn't impact that either, so.
No, if, if we do go with like a bandstand, you're gonna need some more parking. So if that's a choice, you know, that's gonna draw people down and I think you, you're gonna need more parking if that's the choice that's made.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay, well, thanks. Yeah, we really appreciate it.
Just for a little more information, in zoning, look at building height, lots about the living space and then lots about the space about it, it doesn't count towards.
Well, I definitely gotta sit down, get down and look at all this. But we're not gonna do that thoroughly. So, I'll definitely. Thank you. All right. Under. Ten five. We have, uh, item C. We've already addressed A and B, which is nine six permit for one eighteen dash four dash G R dot twenty two. Um, as far as Joseph and Cheryl Wilson, who's the applicant here. Have reduced planes, maybe like, perhaps it was out voiced.
That different than what we have?
See, sure, my permit fine. Yeah, you might share.
Fine.
We do.
Good evening. Uh, Charlie Bill, from S C C Post, here in Chilwell. Property owner, this is special permit request, uh, for property located in seventy nine Finney Way. Uh, this is a proposal, your suggestion, so add to the Wilson's primary residence, uh, within the wetland box office. And I just gave you is a formal permit plan. And just to kind of show you what that is, on the left side of the page is the existing conditions. On the right side of the page is the proposed conditions. And nice and easy right on that. So just to kind of run you through it, uh, the property is identified as tax map, uh, one eighteen lot four, it's located on the south side of Swains Lake. Uh, has shared private access known as Finney Way. The lot was originally point two nine acres in size, but a hundred and eleven feet of frontage, shoreline frontage. Uh, I don't know if you recall, but in December, January, twenty one, twenty two, we were in before this board in which we did a. Lot line adjustment with a budding logic, uh, two fifty six dash two, which is the south of this property. Uh, that was approved and basically what that did was increase the size of the lot. Uh, as I said, this lot is originally at point three acres, we added about eleven and a half acres to it. Is a tremendous amount of additional shoreline frontage, not all of it contiguous, some of it to the right to the home. And then some of it, uh, as you can see, there's some existing homes to the left. I'll turn around there, so picked up quite a bit of frontage and brought the lot up to almost about twelve acres. Everybody follow along with that? So the original now expanded, uh, lot that supports the Wilson's home is a three bedroom, single family. Uh, served by its own septic system, which is located just to the south of it. And the driveway comes into the south side of the building as well. Uh, the building is located fairly close to the Westley budding property line, it's only about twenty seven feet from that property line. We bring it all, okay, sure. So where the house is located, there's a wetland, uh, located on the east of the home. Uh, it's a small pocketed, uh, fully drained towards the wetland, that was delineated by our wetland scientist, uh, Timothy Florida. It's located, shown on the plan, even healthier and physically delineated, we picked up the flag, so we know exactly where it is. That wetland is basically, uh, like I said, pocketed, it does have, uh, some relief going out of the north end of it. Uh, kind of a channelized relief that goes out to the lake. It pretty much collects just stormwater runoff, natural stormwater runoff from the south side, from the east side of it. Once it, uh, like in the springtime conditions, it'll fill up a little bit and then it'll drain out to the. But for the most part, I think that's dry all year long, I mean, it's not a vulnerable, so. Uh, we had our soil sign is out there at that time of the year when the pool or activity, it's not a problem, so it's just a small pocketed weather. So the proposal, uh, as you can see on the right side of the page, is simply Joe just wants to construct a two story addition to the homes. Can be twelve hundred and thirty six square feet. Uh, the addition will contain an indoor swimming pool on the lower floor. Then on the upper floor, he's gonna relocate his bedroom. Uh, it'll be the master bedroom, so it'll remain a three bedroom home with no additional bedroom added to the property. So just basically a nice expansion for the house. So, uh, as I noted, there's a couple of, uh. Things that would prevent you from adding expedition anywhere else onto the house, um, to the south, this is epic system, the driveway. And as I said, we're pretty close to the Wesley property line. So the only area is to the right of it that you, that you're looking at it, towards the lake. Or on the Eastley property, uh, Eastley property side. So that puts the, um, addition about fifty three point seven feet from the lake. Uh, which is already getting some variance forward and then it puts you twenty six point eight from that pocketed weapon. As you can see to the right. So that plan that you have before you, we were required to submit, uh, an N H D E as shore and permit application. Uh, we did that, uh, that is an approved permit plan, uh, we submitted no changes, they accepted it. Made sure that we were out of the fifty foot primary weapons, uh, lake setback. So as you can see from the plan, as you kind of helped with, we've taken great care to ensure, uh, that both the. uh, that both the water quality of the lake and that adjacent weather are maintained. You can see with the proposal included specific, uh, construction sequences, call for the implementation of erosion control. Part of the started construction to be maintained throughout and until the site finally stabilized. Uh, minimize, minimize impact, uh, with the increased previous area of being additional to the house. Uh, who offered up the replying, uh, stone French lines under each side of the house. So if the roof runoff comes off, it's a peak right down the middle, it'll, uh, runoff and then it'll be collecting the drip line trenches on either side, so you won't have any stormwater runoff, uh, running away from the house down into the wetlands at all, which they'll be being right there if I was. The soil is right around the house, really well drained, so it works quite well for this. Uh, grading in and around the house, but the addition, I should say, are minimal. We do, uh, show a very short, small segment of retaining wall on the right side, uh, just to kind of keep everything tight to the house and keep our, uh, impacts down. Uh, all disturbed areas is with any, uh, construction, it'll, it'll be home seeded and then monitor the living stabilized. So, um, when it's all sitting down, we'll have maybe a fifteen to twenty foot wooden buff, uh, wooden buffer around that wetland, a little bit of lawn area in the addition. Submitted the application for the special permit. Questions?
What big is the actual well? Just for a second.
Didn't ask that measure, but I would tell you it's probably about three thousand square feet itself.
Yeah, well, the reason why I asked, if it's three thousand square feet or under, there is no well in buffer and we didn't get an actual dimension on it.
Is where I'm showing a fifty foot buffer around it, so I think it's.
The wetland is under three thousand, it says. But I'll, it said the isolated wetland and surface water on three thousand square feet or less does not meet the definition of a smart marsh or bog or runoff hole is exempt from the buffer.
Okay.
So that's why I wanted to know what the size was, because if it's over three thousand, it's not over too much.
Right, right. I would imagine it's probably just over though.
Yeah.
And we move forward with the application?
Yeah, that's why I was asking. I thought I had asked before, but the sign wasn't.
I don't remember being asked the question, no.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think I might have asked.
I apologize for not having that, but I didn't know that was an issue. Well, so really the issue is.
Yeah, it makes a difference and you might not even have to come if we've got to find that out, we didn't have it, that's.
Okay.
Or if it is over, it's only over by a hundred feet, it kind of works on, okay, there was I forget what last thing you would need about, it might give them a different opinion on, but the value of that wetland and how much of the budget you're.
Okay, and then like I said, it's right around three thousand square feet.
I have a question, is it a two bedroom or a three bedroom?
It's currently a three bedroom, it'll stay a three bedroom.
Thank you. Two bed. You've taken the three bedroom, plenty of two bedroom. New building.
Okay, that's acceptable. There's one here now.
The existing dwelling as a two bed. Am I having it wrong?
It, it says existing dwelling proposed.
Two bed.
Two bed. Yeah, two bedrooms.
I'm sorry, the next page. That's what I was trying to make sure I was.
Yeah, they're basically just gonna take one bedroom, one existing, that'll be the master bedroom.
I got a comment and a question, you show fifty foot waterfront buffer, that's seventy five feet, right? Show one protection.
Fifty feet is the, is the D E S requirement, uh, no building within that fifty feet. I know the towns is a seventy five foot buffer.
And anybody got a bearing, sir?
And we got the barriers, okay.
I guess the question I had is, you know, for a nine point six, you gotta look at all reasonable alternatives, that's to be feasible. Now, I guess given the scope of this project, I am not convinced that moving the septic in the driveways are a reasonable angle of looking. I mean, you have it, it's listed as unknown type and size. It's very close to, you know, the lake. You have a septic system, that's probably, well, then maybe, probably doesn't meet today's requirements. And moving that and improving that, and then relocating the building. I don't think take as a given, you can't move the building by the septic system, so I guess I'm not convinced, there's been evidence shown to convince me. If, you know, you're talking about a thirty by forty foot addition, which is pretty sizable. So within the scope of that project, you know, relocating a driveway and septic system does not seem unreasonable to me. So if you, all reasonable alternatives are gonna be looked at and dreamed in feasible for nine point six. I don't know that I feel that was not that required. I think moving the septic system, particularly where you're gonna block the access to hydrology because it's there. The hydrology is clearly toward the lake, I mean, by putting it there, you may compromise it. Um, relocating it, like I say, within the scope of the project, which is pretty expandable. Love the idea of the, uh, first floor, uh, indoor pool. But that said, you know, relocated septic and groom the septic does not seem to be that unreasonable.
So you want to move it to the left of the fifty foot set, the setback line?
Further away from the lake, he's got twelve acres.
Oh, the lake, okay, I thought you were concerned about the buffer.
So really, the only location that that would work, if you're trying to get outside the fifty foot buffer, would be to pick the, the whole addition up and then put it over on the left side of the home.
But then you'd be within the lot line.
No, if you move it forward away from the lake, more in line with the existing building. You can see where the wetlands jogs to the, to the west, to the east. You could probably reduce your impact significantly, um, as well as, you know, obviously you got the barriers, but you could have been further away from the lake.
It would still be within the fifty foot buffer though, if you tried to maintain the size of that.
Yeah, if you slide that towards the end of the house and come up, I think we're actually close. No, I think the wetlands goes this way, so if you move it that way, you're gonna move away from the wetlands.
Not according to my plan, it doesn't.
No, they get that dog, they get that line.
Behind the house here, it's coming getting closer to this point.
I'm talking about sliding it more in line, moving it forward, this way.
Closest to the lake?
No, farther from.
Behind the house more, I understand.
Next to the shed, you want to move it all the way next to the shed on the left?
We're in the driveway, the septic is, I want to move it more that way.
So take over this whole driveway.
Or on the other side of the house, it's like.
The same side of the house, but further down, maybe.
On the same side of the house, it's gonna get closer when we're back.
I think that would also be kind of a dramatic change as far as what, uh, Joe would have to do as far as construction and the whole, I think this all worked. That's his entrance on that Westley side of the home. In your kitchen area on the inside as well.
And the bathroom.
And the bathroom. And so that was one of our considerations at the time as well.
Well, you, you, you say one of the reasons you know, I want to put that, want to move is gonna be, you can't put there because of the driving the septic. And a septic that's unknown design on the side, you're putting a new house in, you're putting a new structure in, probably increasing the load. Moving, it's on the lake. That's my question.
Uh, again, still maintaining three bedrooms, so we're not gonna be increasing the loads. Uh, Joe, who can be pumped the tank, uh, has problem with the septic system. I know it's probably not, uh, a record septic system, it's old. Uh, but it does function and it has function and do maintains it, so it is a viable system. To have to explain that and move that, I think a significant cost to be, uh, and a lot more site disturbance as well.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
And it, and one of them is pertaining to the fact you're putting a pool in. Where's all the water gonna go from public? Cause that's not, that's not an uncommon process, it's the drain and fill up pools. Service it. That didn't take a whole bunch of coronated water and it's gotta go somewhere.
I have a truck coming and pumping it out, just as I have a truck coming in.
No, it's an, it's an interesting question, uh, my sister, their husband, they have a pool in the door pool, I don't ever remember them, I mean, taking water out, I know occasionally, gotta have a little water to it. Uh, no, it's an interesting question, I would imagine the only way you could remove it, you certainly just can't let it run over ground into the, into the lake, the wet.
You can't.
So we just have it removed by truck.
And the only time I've had to dry my pool is put a new line in it.
Right, it typically.
Typically, I'm adding water, but indoor, you're not gonna lose water.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah. And the other part that I've seen is some, like, something happens where you have to go in and service it, maintain it, or there's a internal, um, structural pump and filter system issue that requires them to drain it down. You look at, uh, hot tub spools, anything, and, and you, like, I spend a lot of time in the north country and you look at all of the properties up there, including people that I know that have private pools. They have had to bring them out for some sort of service or project maintenance, saying it with a leak or something that happens that caused them to have to drain them. And I can tell you, I've seen garden hoses run out the side door, pumping them out, so. Uh, that's something that concerns me. Also, you have a metal roof, what, how are you planning on tying that in, transitioning this, the next building in on that? Just from that.
That's why that little jug in it is coming out of the existing bedroom into the addition to the way.
So you're coming in from the side?
From right on that back corner.
Yep. And then you have a two story unit there and then a two story existing.
So it's actually, I didn't fill them in on that, I'll change that, it's one floor now. And I'm gonna put, pass the bedroom to the front, so relocated. So it's only one story. The trusses, I already gave them the information, the trusses to get to your door trusses.
I just saw, yeah, how the roof line, the hip lines would come together on him.
Again.
Weird. But then just, I'm assuming that's got a pitched valley that's gonna dump it. Well, realistically, it has to dump it toward the lake.
Uh, no, the roof goes this way, it's a lake now, and that roof's gonna be the same way.
Yep.
Except for where it touches the house.
Right, but you're gonna have two peaks coming together there on a, on a slight angle and you've gotta have the waters gotta go somewhere, just not just gonna sit.
Be a cheap wall in the valley where the two come together.
Right, but it's the direction it would naturally go would be toward the lake because everything else pitches the other one. Like if you look toward the back end, it's gonna have a runoff on the back side of it.
So a lot of times D E S, if they have an issue with those, they happen to gut it, it's in some type of, uh, water filtration system, whether it's a rain guard or something. But with D E S has looked at this and that whole bit and they have the jurisdiction of the lake. They must have showed them enough evidence because of the soils and stuff like that, that it's not gonna be an issue with the water going to the lake or else D. Actually, a lot of them, what they had to do, dry wells, rain guards and everything else because of the stuff on the lake. From D E S, so D E S don't have an issue with this, it's gotta be the right soils that they see that the water's being absorbed.
Yeah, we're gonna be picking up the, the most of it with infiltration trenches, dirt line.
And that's all, how do you show my plan?
Yes.
It. Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out where that comes in on the front end of it. In where the existing house and the new property, the new building meet up.
So the issue with the septic, I just want to make sure everybody understands. That existing system, the state allows them to continue using it until it goes into failure. So to say you've got a system that works and hasn't gone into failure, but go ahead and change it, because I think at all, it's kind of over the top. It's all concrete.
Right, because they're not increasing the debris size, they would.
Wasn't increase in voting, the state still allows you to use your existing one.
But you have to show that you have a septic on file.
Yeah, we got a game plan.
Yeah. Yes. That's what, why I was just trying to figure out where the roof lines are dumping to there, because that, that water's gotta go somewhere and it's gonna be a sheet from the bottom.
And a new septic, if they put it in, they'd have them stay away from the lake anyways, if they want to get as much away from the lake as possible.
Yeah, I, and I would, I mean, looking at it, they're propping pretty close to being, they're, even their existing septic's probably almost a hundred feet back from the lake.
Yeah, but it's closer than fifty to that wetland, if you look at it, which is, wouldn't be able to go in today.
I don't know if it would be close to them.
If you look at it, it's pretty close to that fifty foot bottom line.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right, yeah, yes.
It's pretty close.
Yeah, so you're right.
This might not be, the legion might not actually be in there, but it's close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two horned in the.
Yeah.
Yeah, like ultimate spot right there.
Well, D E S's rules change. About twenty years ago to today, it's totally different.
I, I mean, the other thing to look at too is where you have the septic there and you're dumping all that roof line down on there, that's why I was trying to understand.
There will be others on the house, on hand, that, helping away from the lake.
Mm-hmm, and then also a little like pushing it back so it doesn't dump right on your septic so that you don't saturate your septic.
The septic's beside it, so it's gonna go all the way to the back.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was trying to make sure I understood, it's just that front spot where the two roof lines meet. I was trying to see where the water's going. Other questions, comments?
Item number six says infiltration trenches, so mitigate.
Done, um, this time, uh, I will print in public comment, we'll see it. Well, so maybe just connect to the fronts or, or to the mic, uh, podium.
What is it like?
Podium, Mr. Jeffrey's.
For them?
Yep, and if you would just speak your name so that it's, it's filled and after it's uploaded to the public right.
Steven Jeffrey on twenty eight Trans Road, Barrington. Um, I understand what project is and would be otherwise prohibited, is that correct? There's construction and wetlands.
But without that, I mean, they were, they have a state approval and a request.
There's.
A week.
According to our zoning ordinance, construction, dredging, filling, et cetera, is prohibited in the wetland.
Correct, without a, without relief.
Correct.
Right.
Nine six specifically authorized a use not otherwise permitted. It doesn't say for a use that's prohibited, but I think it's a common complaint I have. You can't use the nine six for rent for a prohibited reason. I've got some documents I'll share with you. The Hampshire Municipal Association says, conditional use permit is a tool used by municipal, simple mass innovation, land use control. Adopted per soon to our Z N six forty, seventy four, twenty one. Conditional uses, thank them as a special use permit. Land use activities can be divided in three categories. Limited uses, prohibited uses, the middle grounded uses that might be beneficial but can create problems with non-controlled properties. Addition news permits address the middle and ground of uses. They allow municipalities and all property to use the ways that benefit the community while still controlling potential risks. Another document from Paul Zantzen from the O C. Planning boards only have jurisdiction to deal with subdivision site plan reviews. They are not to buy the Gil's buildings to leave from provision from the zoning ordinance when there is no subdivision or site review pending. I'm guessing if this was a new subdivision submitted to the planning board, probably wouldn't approve what's being proposed here. Planning board authority derives from R S A six seven two thirty five, authorities regulate the act of subdivision. This section grants the town planning board the power to regulate the act of subdividing, but not the land that has been subdivided. Cites the legal page. I think the appropriate place to, uh, send this is to the C B day. Special use permit authorizes land uses that are allowed and occurs from the ordinance and declared harmonious with the applicable zoning district. Then a section, quote from Wiki. The local zoning authority grants a special use permit that exceeds the discretion allowed to it, that an incident or spot zoning may arise. Such discretion then may be attacked as ultra wires. And the federal permit overturned is an unconstitutional violation of equal protection.
Here. It's just one comment. I will gladly pass.
The same information that we basically went over with the Chinese Buckley when we all met with the N H M A, under that whole bit, because of. Under that whole bit, because it's adopted on the innovative land use. And if you read, what, nine point six, it says it uses not otherwise permitted in the lab and. Maybe indicated that the planning board approves it. So it's this was supported by our attorney and by the N H M A.
There, public comment? There are none. This time I'll close public comment. Yet further word discussion? Shouldn't it write? Nine point six? Yes. Oh. Probably be seeing this one so many times. This obviously.
Well, this is actually something new. You were class six, you don't think before and.
It's been before.
Yeah.
Been before. For motion to accept the application is complete.
Some information, motion to accept is complete.
Well, second.
So because of that whole new policy, you gotta stay, oh, oh. I'm sorry, I thought I was thinking of a motion to approve, but.
Ready to. Okay, motion, a second, roll call vote.
Sushi, I.
Step yellow eye.
Blue eye.
That's your eye, complete.
Alan, I.
Yeah, fine.
So we have a, um, we've accepted the application is complete for a motion on nine nine to accept. The motion for the nine six.
Let's get three in.
I'm sorry. When you get the motion, the motion has to be aligned with.
No, Matt, certainly. Yeah, that five.
The request for the applicant, nine point six, um, a lot of construction.
I forgot the five criteria in there. You go to page thirty seven of these. Your spine.
He's been there somewhere.
Using the zoning ordinance.
That's right, we're gonna go.
So in your application, you have that.
Yep, the five criteria.
Who's related? Don't give me the reason why they feel they comply.
Sure.
And you're definitely.
You want to read the, if you want, I'll just read the, uh, criteria, you know, just give your response to that. Number one, the proposed use and keeping to the intent purposes set forth in the zoning ordinance. As permitted in the base zoning district. Uh, it's the base zoning district. Whereas additional use permit or special exception for the proposed use, one must already have been obtained. Or if the proposed use is not listed in the favorable uses, or is listed but not permitted, one must already have obtained the variance. Our response is that this is an expansion of a residential dwelling in a residential zone, therefore meets the intent. And a DES shore and permit has been obtained, and that permit considers stormwater management, uh, including erosion control, stabilization. There is no additional wetland or direct impact of wetland. You want to discuss or just have to go through them?
Even three.
Let's go.
It's written in the record, thank you.
After review of all reasonable alternatives, it's determined to be uh, invisible to place the proposed structure or use outside of the buffer zone. My response is that due to the parking, uh, location of the septic and adjacent property line, uh, and other potential locations, uh, that would prohibit that addition from being placed there. And variance has been granted to be within seventy five feet of the shoreline. Number three, the proposed structure or use must, uh, be set back as far as possible from the delineated edge of wetland or surface water. And my response to the proposed addition would be twenty six point eight feet from the forty degree wetland, a tree buffer will remain. Number four, appropriate erosion control measures must be in place prior to during construction, uh, per the approved shoreline plan. Uh, core log infiltration trenches, uh, bone seed that will all be part of the, uh, construction and maintenance. And restoration. And in service to the surrounding buffer zone must be repaired, restored by completion of construction. And as I said, their tree buffer, uh, will remain altered areas that we stayed with for a permanent.
One more.
Number six.
Number. Yep.
Very good. All available mitigation measures to address changes in water quality and quantity, uh, to be implemented along with design and construction methods to minimize adverse impacts if required by a planning board. Uh, again, infiltration trenches are proposed to mitigate stormwater increase on the previous area. Breeding, retaining, containing stormwater as well, uh, minimal impact to site. And restoration.
Back from the board.
Still looking to see if there is a motion from the board. We've, uh, kind of sets based on the conditions written by the applicant.
Thanks, Mr. Jim, I should say. I did have something else. Um. I know that I had sent out, um, the new guidance for written findings. The person that makes the motion needs to, um, state why they're making that motion, whether it's approved, denied, conditioned for, et cetera. And that's for each.
So not to scare anybody away, but it can be as simple as we feel they meet the six criteria. It doesn't have to be something.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to grant relief for nine six. Uh, based upon the six criteria that was presented to Boris.
Motion. Mr. Kessia, looking for a second. Second. Seconded by Mr. Howard. Call vote.
Sushi.
You don't have to, which you, you're hate on us.
I know, I know, I've listened to it, but I'm gonna have to say no. Um, I think I have to pass. Call this one.
I mean, I'm standing.
Yes, stand.
Really torn on this one. Bye.
That's your eye. Hey. I know, I can. Back and forth, back and forth on this one. I, I'm also gonna say names.
So it's denied, uh, one to one vote.
Four to one, two to one, one of them.
Four to two, four to two, one of them.
Again. Three to two, one of them staying.
Three to two, one, stand.
Section they all think or what.
We have to do.
How they just say, well, I see that managed.
So you're looking for it from each person you said.
It has to be just a general thing, probably a consensus of. I think you finally need to say.
Uh, six point one, proceed. One to me, um, not looking at. I think was something that was reasonable to do. And I, I think taken as a given, it could be more. Was, was not determined to be a piece. So I think that on that one criteria, I think it's all true.
I found the nine point six, I'm also just like one. There is a way to move it around, I feel, also. Um, and not ask for a waiver.
Uh, from my standpoint, I think there's gonna be a need for a waiver. I I, I'm just, my thought is to figure out how to minimize that impact. I don't. This accomplishes that, especially the fact that I'm hearing plans that's change as we're getting presented by information. From this. And I'm, I'm just not convinced that the stormwater mitigation has actually been addressed to the, the, the types of the criteria here. Under nine six one, be appropriate for erosion control. Setting back as far as possible under one.
That said, you can reapply if you. Would mean that would be. Also, do any, yeah, mentions on the map. Well, I think I can see what you come on the project, et cetera. You see what's needed, if it is needed, showing that.
Thank you very much. Good night. Two twenty three, nine dash two, ah, S B A, dash twenty two, dash.
All things is the same as what you have, but they're colored, so. This name is the political, same as the board.
Good evening. My name's Daniel Holon. I'm project manager, very surveying and engineering, representing the family trust. Tonight for a subdivision on Scruton Pond Road. Uh, the property is known as tax map two twenty three, like, I. The incentive of the project is to subdivide this into three separate lots, utilizing the back lot ordinance for one of the lots. Uh, each of the other two proposed lots have more than the required non-brook footage. Um, the plan set is expanded a little bit based on our, uh, staff comments from last month, so we requested the continuance, so we could kinda take care of that. The narrative says that includes an overview subdivision sheet, two detailed subdivision sheets and two detailed topographic sheets, which it still does. Now there are six driveway site distance plans. Um, add to the feedback of the lot, of the plant set, so there's total of the. Uh, we did do a complete boundary survey of the lot that's reflected on these plans. Um, and the, uh, complete wetland delineation. Uh, which includes a large percentage, a large percentage of the weapons that's here is prime wetlands. Um, in town, so we have a buffer to that. Topographical service comprised of both traditional survey data as well as some white art data on the back part. Um, so again, our intent is to subdivide it, as shown here, we have three lots, green, red. Uh, and the entirety of the existing lot is currently wooded and or, like I said, the open water, be this long, prime wetlands. How do you wanna refer to it? Uh, there's no structures, block systems, subject systems, anything on the lot, it's just vacant land. Uh, each lot will be serviced by private driveway, well, and subject, we do have test pits um, on the lots as shown on the topographic sheets. Uh, the application does fall under the E S subdivision for two of the lots, the, uh, green and the blue, as they are less than five acres. The red lot uh, is over five acres, so it would not be subject to T E S subdivision program. That, uh, approval for those two lots is pending at the moment. Um, overall, as far as the application is concerned, I think it's a fairly straightforward application. We do have a couple of waiver requests, but I don't think they're submission items, so I don't know whether you wanna discuss those now, or if you wanna discuss the application first and then give them. I'll leave that up to you, I guess.
Anytime for the information you got, makes it so you can accept the application is complete. The other items are something that you'll be almost out of, like, a final approval or not at the end. Or is it supposed to accept it?
I do have a question then. So the plan set, we're going to find out about it, use it, flip the pitch, the second pitch, I'm sure you're already done. Um, we see the western third outline in yellow. I had a ghost a little bit more of like. This system out there, we definitely need some kind of boat. Very deep weight to see, you know, to the middle.
Looking for a motion to accept the application is complete.
Take that motion.
Seconded. Call vote.
Sushi, I. Happy yellow eye.
Just go on.
Just your eye.
Alan, I.
Yeah. Any question?
General comment is from the board.
I have a question. The, um, the red lot, the pink lot, whatever it is.
Yep.
You got fifty foot fromage?
Yes.
On the road? And how, when it inches down right here, how narrow is that?
This is fifty feet.
It's narrow. How about down here?
Uh, down. Right here?
Yeah.
I don't have that dimension. That's an existing lot. That's the way the lot is currently shaped.
Yeah, but you can't create a lot with less than seventy five feet, what?
We're not creating this lot. This lot exists. It exists in its current state.
Yeah, but you're, you now you subdivide, so you're creating a new lot.
So it's an existing condition that you can't change.
I know, but I think it, to be, to be correct, I think you have to ask for a waiver for it, it's less than seventy five feet. Should we grant, obviously, but I think that'd be correct. It's great, that is a new lot being created, if that's less than seventy five feet, that's not a lot of priorities. So it's existing lot, I think, can't change.
No, it can't.
But I think it, you can't create a lot that's less than seventy five feet with under the ordinances, so I guess that'd be one more way for you to ask for it, to me. Be, yeah.
I don't believe, in fact, I didn't need to write, I don't believe we've ever asked for that waiver before on any practice.
Yeah, it's like you say, it's existing law, you can change it. So be no reason not to grant the waiver.
The reason for that regulation to begin with is they didn't want me to get road front, choke it down narrow and then open it up. So when it has since you're creating a, a second backlot, because you showed two hundred foot. I mean, that was the rationale behind that seventy five point again, right? That's in subdivision two, right?
Yeah. It's a subdivision.
Yeah, it's time to be with that design and construction.
I mean. I don't think anyway, we could not afford it, but I think. If we are creating a lot, it's like five feet. Let's not be our own.
You just make sure it's done correctly.
On the section, you look, I guess, permanently up. Be eleven point two, point two, parentheses three. You would have to ask for a way to go.
Only if this is less than seventy five feet.
Well, I mean, I, I don't know what it is exactly, but based on that's fifty feet, I just eyeballing it, it's less than seventy five.
Almost makes it because.
Yeah. I think it would be easier just to ask for it.
It's asked for it to. Yeah, I mean, a lot.
Especially.
Yeah.
Would you like to proceed through your list of requested waivers?
Sure. So I do have two waivers. Yes, we do. This one first, this is for boundary markers. I think I did in two different dates, and this one stated September tenth first, one twenty two. Requesting a waiver to article eighty point one. Or in accordance with eighty point one, we're identifying the waiver request of setting boundary monuments on existing property lines every three hundred feet. The requirement found in section eight point eight states, quote, monuments for the lot being developed shall not be put, shall be placed not more than three hundred feet apart in each straight line, end quote. It's our request to waive this requirement for some of the existing boundary lines, a parcel. Attached to that waiver request, I. Provided basically a plan, kind of looks like this, is highlighted for the lines that we are requesting the waivers for. And that would be the road, the old railroad bed and this area of swamp that we can't lock it. So the intent of the rule for justification, the intent of the rules to ensure the property owners know where the boundary lines fall. In this case, the property is surrounded largely by the former railroad, by Scruton Pond Road. And we do plan to set monuments per the regulation at all new boundary corners and all new boundary lines. Proposed boundary lines that are larger than three hundred feet. You can see that on the detailed plans. But we feel like given the natural boundary markers as described twelve, the monument, the monumentation that we would perform. And the plan which would be supported parcels that future land should have no issues. With that. And strict conformity to regulations would pose unnecessary hardship. By way of additional cost, monumenting lives along the railroad lands through the fine weapons, which would probably only be able to be done from the winter with extremely. And roadway, the financial burden would pose unnecessary hardship. As the perceived or potential perceived benefits of the extra boundary markets would be outweighed. So again, there's that sketch. We're just asking for it basically here, here, down to the edge of the wetland and then on this line. This line, the rear line here and this line are longer than three hundred feet and we can easily set monuments out there, so we would go ahead and do that.
What, what's the aversion to marking the railroad then? Because I see like. Stuff like that tends to change or flex as time goes on.
The railroad lands can't change. It's on, still by the state.
Right, but what I, what I tend to see happen is people in front of it. And I speak from a position of experience. I looked at a property that had buttered the railroad.
Yeah.
And the space that actually invaded all the way up to the railroad, the former railroad tracks. And the backyard was technically like mostly on railroad property, so. I feel like proper delineation of bounds is an important component on that.
So. I could revise the, I guess, revise the request and we would put them down here, down to the building area. And then from the swamp, this whole area is swamp. Along the railroad bed, I don't feel like there would be any encroaching into the wetlands. Outside the building area, shouldn't be. But from there, there, we could put a couple along there where the proposed house would be. That makes sense.
Makes sense.
Marker in the, in the back bottom right corner where here's the railroad bed. No, no, no.
Here. Or right there. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But I revise it, revise the sketch basically to show this from here to the wetland land is blue. On my sketch.
Are any other areas that anybody has any? We be. Would you be using a GPS point for the pinch point in the red? The pinch point in the red.
Here.
There.
I think, I think this is. Enough that we could get in there. It's close enough to the edge of the wetland. I think we can get in there and set an actual rebound. Probably end up being a long one because it's pretty wet, but we'll set it and leave it up so people can see it. But we'll set, we wouldn't use GPS. We don't use GPS to set boundary markets to be traditional survey.
It just because you're requesting a waiver on that area, so.
Right.
How.
In, in this area, here's the really wet part, this line. I think we can get to that.
And then. The boundary markers where your lots, one and two, your front lots come across in the back or?
We're gonna struggle our way out there and set that. And then this is close to the edge. So we should be fine on that one. But we do want to set the corners. That's, that's important.
So it's just the continuous three hundred.
Continuous three.
Looking for a motion to. Cension to a waiver to article eight point one. Okay. That's the eight point one.
Yes, eight point eight.
Eight point eight, yes.
Make the motion.
Okay, yes.
Thanks, Ron. For your answer.
Yes, if you will, please, with the.
The monuments for both. Okay. Requirements allow monument, the lot being developed shall be placed more than three hundred feet apart. For section eight point eight monuments of the subdivision regulation. Now, grain noise would pose unnecessary hardship to applicant, grabbing waiver not be mandatory to spare intent regulations.
With the amended notes. As these. As new, so marking that. Are you looking for a second? Yeah, that's what's reading. And I'll motion to approve that. For a second. It's amended.
Second.
We'll call.
Masukia. Kapiel.
Chris Colain.
Yes, your act.
Excellent. All right, waiver number two dated September second, twenty twenty two. This one is in response to and accompanied with the. Site distance plans, which are pages six through eleven. In your plan set. Staff comment and department heads had some concerns about the placement of the driveways that are first, the middle. So we did some site testing plans and in doing so, we realized that. And really Chris Barry knows much more about this waiver request than I do because he wrote, he understands this much better than I do, but it's a way that the way he explained it to me. Hopefully. That will be good enough. But he noticed that the town regulations as far as what is required for site distance. Does not match DOT or ASHTO standards for what is required. And in fact, it's significantly more stringent in the town levels. And this is found under intersection figure four A. Doesn't really have a. Section in the. Regulation, I don't think. It's under road design. And then also definitions, under definition, site distance is where the town. Rule says that it's supposed to be something that's three and a half feet high. Being something that's half a foot high in the road. Three hundred feet. So again, explanation, as Chris explained to me, the requirements found in figure four A are misapplied for driveway applications and deviates from. The ASHTO geometric design of highways. Which is known as the Green Book and they also differ from DOT driveway policies. Section twelve point three points to figure four A, which is found in the road design section. Of the regulations, so the driveway section pointing to the road design figure when describing regulation for residential driveway. Figure four A, if you look at that, is of a vehicle sitting a functional intersection with stop bar and stop sign. Implying really its purpose for a new road and not a residential driveway because no driveways have those things. And figure four A being in the road design section has really the same implication. The definitions applied in subdivision regulations for stopping site distance states its calculated requirement again. Driver's side, three and a half feet, looking at object, half a foot. Which is misapplied in the ASHTO manual for purposes of calculating site distance in the twenty eighteen revision of that Green Book. Section three point two point six criteria for measuring site distance and these things are found at the end of this waiver request too, if you want to correct them. Is calculated with the driver assuming to be three and a half feet, looking at an object two feet tall along the alignment of the roadway and the revision here. Prior now outdated. But the misapplication comes in the form of clarifying paragraph entitled intersection site distance. Which is really what we're looking for here, which states that when calculating intersecting, intersection site distance heights, passive site distance. Which uses the same object height function of three and a half, looking at three and a half should be utilized. And the pages from the Green Books again are at the end of the document on pages three and four, and in all applications to NHDOT. As found in the DOT driveway policy, the requirement is three, three point seven five, so three feet, nine inches. Looking at an object to the same height, three feet, nine inches. And the page from DOT policy is on page five of the request. So the purpose of, the purpose and intent waiver justification of letter A. Turning out the purpose dependent regulation. Obviously, the purpose and intent of site distance is to a certain standard is to ensure safety of drivers and future occupants of the homes. We would submit that the proposed design carries out this purpose and intent through the proper use of the DOT driveway policy along with the ASHTO Green Book. Strict conformity would place a burden on the applicant by way of additional excavation on a roadway that would not ordinarily be required and change the look and entrance. Expert on road. It's really unnecessary, we feel, in that standard required by the regulations is misapplied and really far exceeds the standard regulations imposed by higher government agencies on. Much more traveled roads. We do have, if you look at. These. You don't get a sheet eight. You can see some grading on that one. We are proposing to cut that bank back in that location. But that bank is really. The reason that the site systems doesn't work, didn't work from both of the locations for the green lot and the red lot. Once that bank is cut back. Off the road bit. Which the driveway is by right through there, so it kind of works out. Then the site distance for both of them is easily seen on the profile because at the bottom of those pages.
And you're talking site distance with a three and a half for a base?
Three, three point seven five, three point seven five, which is DOT policy.
So the only thing that concerning out of that is when you look at the reason, the decision site distance has a two foot height. And you're coming southerly on that road, or really southerly being easterly, you have an easterly sun in the morning, which means you're going to have a blinding sun with somebody potentially pulling off. With somebody traveling in excess of thirty five to forty miles an hour, most likely down that road. So when you talk about decision site making distance, it's a different site distance than. The three point seven five, it's the lower volume, which assuming stretches the distance ratio.
It's, yeah, it's down to two feet. Yeah, the other thing, just I forgot to add, the town requires three hundred feet of site distance and our profiles are showing three hundred and twenty five, so we have further, we can see further at three point seven five. Yeah, I, I think the decision site distance object is intended for. When you're driving along the road and you're coming to something where you're following a car and you have the decision to stop. That's what it's talking about. You can see something two feet. It's not talking about intersection, which is at that point, the decision is up to the person pulling out. Theoretically should be. And the decision is you can look and you can see a car at three point seven five, because that's what the intersection site distance object is talking about and then refers you up to the passing site distance.
But I also still look at that as the person who's coming, pulling out needs to be able to make a decision without having the. While competing with the natural elements. In that, so, but if you're already meeting the three hundred foot minimum. Where are we requesting, what are we really requesting a waiver?
We're requesting a half inch. Because of the half foot, I mean, half a foot, yes. Yeah, and the figure. Which requires it to be twenty feet off the edge of pavement and DOT policy says fourteen. Fourteen and a half, I think. So really, the entire figure is meant for a roadway which you'd be stopping at the stop bar wherever that would be changed. There's no stop bar on driveway, so if you can, we've all pulled out of our driveway, you edge out to the edge of both ways. You're not pointing feedback from the road, at least I'm not.
I guess my question is though, when I see the road agent.
Yeah.
Comments.
Yeah.
He's not, he was not talking half a foot. He's the, he's, he's going to fall on that criteria.
Yeah.
I'm saying a low, a low level power would not be seen.
Right, so origin looked at this with our first submittal, but I don't believe he's seen it since we re-submitted.
I have the same issue. When we just got second driveway, they cut it six feet.
Yes.
And that's six foot of cotton, so right, a lower driveway by the miracle. Now you can see up the road before you could because you were blinded because of that. That's how they fixed the problem.
Okay, so this.
So the problem.
And to be honest, because he has been out, three weeks out now from Pitt for his maternity, that he did not hear any additional comments. Erin, who was filling in for him, just said that she stood by the comments that he had made.
Okay.
So. Take that, I guess, I'm afraid it's all been.
Let's just based off of the prior of this thing.
Yeah.
Basically, they had to cut that other thing down.
And our first submittal included no site distance plans at all. So we request it was just.
Just the same. Okay, so once they kind of change the design and.
And it, it has been, what's the, what's the distance, what's that stretch the distance out to?
Right now, we have three hundred and twenty five feet.
Right.
We just stopped our, our profiles at three hundred and twenty five. We probably could have gone a little further.
Right, but if you leave it at two feet, you're at
The town regulations says 300.
But at two foot, it would be almost sending out even farther. But that would be, so you wouldn't need a waiver at that point if you beyond the town site distance of three.
Right. I'm just looking at this all briefly and if I can see it, then we would meet. Even if we went to two feet, we would still meet.
Yeah, if you go to page eight, the whole file shows that oh, six foot concrete vehicle by the driveway.
Yeah. I was just looking for what's the site distance stretch on it.
And then when you look at the site system chart, you can see there was that great big deal again, so that.
I'll make a motion to grant a waiver for our site distance based on intersection design figure four because not granting a waiver would pose unnecessary hardship and would not be consistent with the spirit and intent of the regulation.
So Chi.
Happy L O I.
Chris Colan.
Jeff, you're right.
It was seconded by Ellen. You need one more.
As well as the applicant. Reading this, this part of your submittal. You can sign it later too if you want, but.
Vanessa, we're going to make it to 75 feet?
I'll read it, I'll read it into record if you're, if you're fine. 11.2, 2.2, 2.3. The waiver request for the permits for 11.2.2.3, no portion of lot grade under these regulations shall be less than 75 feet unless except as provided for in subsection 11.2.4, there is no backlogs. Not granting waiver would pose unnecessary hardship to applicant and brand the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of regulation.
Do you think I'm off you? Well, second.
So Chi.
Happy L O I.
Chris Colan.
Jeff, you're up.
And I.
Now, fine.
This time I will open the application for public comment.
Is there anybody online speak for or against this application?
You're on a phone, Stan.
I don't see any, is there anybody unmuted? We have one more minute or one more.
This time I'll post public comment. If we have to.
The notice of provision. The notice of provision is that this might prove the application. All the required conditions must be met by applicant ethics. The plan certified planning board, certification plans cleared prior to commitment of any site work or planning design plans. Of course, these precedent conditions are met and certified and considered final. Please note, if all the precedent conditions are not within 12 calendar months of the day after the fourth, 23, the boards of who will be considered have left some less than mutual, we have all extensions being granted by the board. The condition is present or follows, one, and the following to plan. Final signature, but please add owner's signature, wetland scientist's signature, professional authority. At this meeting, the planning board approved three waivers. Waiver, the requirement to allow monuments, a lot being developed. I'll have to get in the language to add in here for section eight, 18 monuments of the subdivision regulations. Number two, the requirement for line of sight from 12.3 driveway access design standards. Figure four A, road design standards and guidelines. The third one is in reference to 11.2.2.3, should no portion of a lot grade under regulations be less than 70 feet? Probably beaten with that was provided for subsection 11.2.4, there is no backlogs. At the final submittal, town finer comments, applicant for site time review and subdivision regulations shall be addressed. Any outstanding fees should be paid to the town. Are obtained to have our signature updates session that three completion. One documentation is the first part in article three, with a letter explaining how the applicant address, the conditions of approval. The shown food final complete report for all items submitted during the plan. During review, the town bearing conspired, chairman to endorse three copies of food plan, meaning the conditions are approval. The town should retain, find and approve, the product will load by 17, we can get a bank warrant for town records. Their general precedent conditions, there is no active or substantial work required on this approval. This comment upon the site within two years from the date the plan applied, this approval shall expire. Extension not to exceed one year may be granted because shorting vote of the board of the bond is applied by the staring days prior to expiration date. The board may grant only one such extension for the site plan. Other plans from submit to the board review can share compliance with these and other town ordinances. Active substantial work, the final section is getting expenditure at least 25%. The infrastructure improvements require this approval. Infrastructure shall need, in this instance, the construction roads from drain, as indicated, the site plan. Current use subjects property or portioned for use to applicant, the current and assessing department, current use now, whether I completed. To acquire assurance of RSA 398. The new, I'm sure, department of revenue, the administration roles satisfied.
I will make a motion to approve it as Vanessa was noted in the regulations. Additional. Second now.
Happy L O I.
Chris Colan.
Jeff, you're right.
Alan.
Now, fine. That's the last project.
Thank you.
Yes. As L O I, so I'm still complaining that this, and really it's more important, like she said, if you go to Nile.
That's what I would.
That's the reasons for right Nile, that's where it should be, you know, and you always had that in the notion decisions anyways. They were, I haven't seen it. They on the side, so they just don't know their strong. Yeah, they're, they're, and they change the line. You can't, I've only getting inside. Yes, yes, yes. He's here.
All right.
Are you in? There continue to have us from September, we have 234-77-TC-22-MSA, all in the Tippito.
I mentioned before that because, so we did receive a letter from your partner. Didn't need to have it, or everybody has it for the file. Is he likely to read it into the record? It stated October 2nd, 2022, to both the planning board and consideration commission. Thank you for taking time during the case of the very concerns. We are not opposed to what is being built, but the concern of the number of units that you expect into one right behind our lot. Wildlife will be impacted by the number this size lot. Here, you're use the path regularly, that unit will be for sure be destructive to the deer. Concerned about the driveway so close to wetland and angle to our house during a site visit, in my opinion, headlight impact not adequately reviewed. Review due to daylight viewings out from our house and trees and foliage. I do consent that most of you agree that there is a high probability of headlight impacts from that plane. And you need to do address that. Not sure if verbalize at the September planning board meeting, a concern of rain and water on up the driveway going into production. We're concerned about our well, but at the same time, don't flooding our basement. The only time we found water basin is during the Mother's Day statewide plan back in 2006, once we're suited on its own a few days. It seems to me the consensus that many of your agreement, most of our concerns, wetland, headlights and the verging. We would prefer less units further away from wetland and not at the top of the path behind us, necessarily sue in way one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again for the Boris Records. My name is Christian Smith, engineer of Beals Associates. Paul Tippito is going to be here tonight as well. And we have received a review from CMA, which we are working our way through. We did have a couple of questions on a few comments and, you know, then we would also ask the board if after the site block, they felt they had enough information to act on the final waiver, which is the landscape buffer waiver as well as especially used for the welding buffer impact. So specific to questions that came out of request from CMA. The first one, and these are all largely road design questions. And as we're looking at a private driveway here, I kind of feel that some of these are intended for roads and driveway specifically. The first of which is they want a minimum 36 inch cover over the culverts shown in our, basically it's just the stormwater trench, pipe trench detail. But I believe there's only one culvert that actually goes under the driveway, maybe two. But again, you know, this is not going to be a town issue. If anything happens to that thing, it's going to be the homeowners association with the condo association. So I was wondering if the board felt that, you know, that was not needed because this is a private drive and not a, not a town road. Just to get an opinion so we know how to react, respond on that one. So basically, they're saying they want three feet of cover over the, over the pipes under there.
What do you have now or what do you?
It's probably in the neighborhood of two, two and a half. Which is more than adequate with these ADS pipes. I mean, you're not going to crush the pipes.
But you aren't going to have commercial buildings there and commercial traffic.
Commercial spaces in the, in the basements, yes.
I'm assuming they're also concerned about lift in the pipe.
Probably, but again, I mean, you know, typical house driveway can have a foot of cover over your, over these H and P pipes and stronger pipes. And, you know, I just, I think this is specific to a town road. I think that's really what that, that particular section is about. So we wanted to call you guys and see how you felt about it.
Well, it's a question of space. I mean, if the drainage works on both sides, you can get it that deep. Why not put it that deep? I don't understand the issue. If, if there's a reason that you can't put that deep.
Well, I think the issue is we would be pushing the floor of the pond down. And that, that's probably what we're doing. And the other thing that would cause is to have to elevate the, well, you'd be one or the other. You're pushing the pipe down or elevating the driveway.
Other than, do you think it's enough? I mean, that's the reason, specific to the site, I think that we need to talk about, discuss.
Well, yeah, and like I say, in the, in the one location I'm thinking of in particular, which is right where the driveway splits. One goes into the little commercial parking area, the other goes up around to the residential. There's a pipe that comes under the driveway at that locations. And what my concern is, is trying not to drive that because you drive the pipe down, you're going to drive that pond down deeper. And it's an infiltration pond, so we need to keep that elevated above the seasonal high water table to a certain extent.
How close is it to the seasonal high water table?
I don't know the answer to that, but it's typically going to be a foot below the bottom of the stowaway to the bio retention phones.
So you're going from between 210 and 212, and then sloping down to two leagues, so two feet down. Weight, you're sitting two foot in. I mean, is it, is it a significant, it doesn't strike me as a significant increase in bill right there. Although, I mean, you have a pretty big big transitional element down.
Create sort of a speed bump there when you're going up over that to, to put more to the arms of it. Well, we're in about news changes, changing the trade per se, but, you know, yeah, I think that's two, two and a half feet of cover is absolutely plenty to not create a problem underneath that road and it's, it's not a town maintenance issue. You know, this is going to be maintained, filed, paid by the COAT.
I think the concern from my perspective is, you know, saying it's enough everywhere. There needs to be specifics of why you don't think it's a fit for that location. You know, I mean, just I think two, two feet is enough. If, if more than two feet creates a speed bump or something like that, that's an explanation. But just saying, I don't think I should follow the town regulations because I hate two feet's enough. I don't think.
Well, I, I think that this apply, this is intended to apply to a town road, which, which we are not looking at.
Well, it's a choice point now. You have to pick one or another excuse, right? So you have the commercial traffic going up this, up this road. So, I mean, for all intents and purposes, it's going to see similar traffic to public road. So I think that, you know, just saying, I don't think we should have to. I think it's a lot of nothing to say. I don't think it's a good fit here because of this. And get into the specifics of why it's, because it's applied to that location.
And so what you're saying is he should apply for a waiver? Is that's, that's your question, right?
Exactly.
Yeah. So he's just asking, does he need to apply for a waiver?
If it is a matter of obligation.
Yeah, if it doesn't match the regulation, you have to apply. And then you want to make sure you can, you're able to justify that under the six frames.
Absolutely.
And we've done it before, but yeah, it's, it's got an explanation why we don't think it's a fit.
Yeah, I understand. And so similarly, the next point is traffic impact evaluation. And again, those are typically used for determining driveway permit, how the entrance gets configured on the way in. Do we need a D cell lane? Do we need an acceleration lane? And where this is completely under jurisdiction of department transportation. Again, I don't think that necessarily applies. If DOT requires a traffic evaluation, we'll. If DOT requires a traffic evaluation, we'll obviously have to give them.
Like wrong. They had, we've had a similar instance in our recent projects on a town road. This is where something we have to look in our regulations to change. It's not been changed yet, but you're in the sake of, you're not matching the regulation.
So it's just.
It works the state road.
Where's the state road?
They're, they're, if they want one, they're getting one. It's, it's that simple.
That one's in our regulation.
Okay.
The state requirement is different than the government.
Right, right. Okay, perfect. And so, yeah, we'll, we'll put those together and that will be in our next available package when we get everything wrapped up for the rest of the commentary. And then the final one, and, and perhaps you feel the same about this, but we have, just to get up this hill, a short, very short section, 110, 150 feet of eight and a half percent drive where 7% is the maximum required in the village center zone. Again, this is not a road, this is a driveway. But if the board feels, you know, a waiver request will be warranted for that section as well.
Any of all are done.
Okay, that, that makes life simple, right?
Isn't the driveway like a 10% rate we had?
Think in different sounds, yeah, 10% is sounds off. Is it, you said in the town.
In the, in the town, in the town, bill, or excuse me, in the village center, the road design standards are maximum 7%.
That's about the whole town, 7% is at max anyways. And it has been, but I thought that driveways were 10. That's why I was looking at.
And if that's the case, then I suppose we would just explain that we're a driveway, not. Yeah.
Actually, our minimum access to a private way is 10% according to our road design charts. There's 57 of that.
So that one would not require the waiver request will just make that clear. We, we do all the statements. Yes, which, which.
High net access, I think you look at the gap condition that gives you so many trips per day.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, less than 200, so that says for trips per day.
Perfect. And then the only other things we really want to discuss with the board tonight, before we're, you know, in a position to finalize this response is, you know, after the sidewalk, I know there was one of the waivers for the buffer screening plantings, landscaping waivers that we had before you last time, that you wanted to hold off until the sidewalk to review and act on. And then again, did the sidewalk give you enough information that you feel comfortable that you're ready to act on the special use permit specific to the, the wetland crossing, the 300 square foot wetland crossing and the buffer impacts? That, that's just a question for you guys. If you want to take whatever answer you have and go over there.
That'd be dead work. A few of you that weren't at the site. Yeah, you're there.
I was there. I was there.
You were there. So I know there was some discussion onsite about some of the concern that Butter brought up about driveway.
The headlights.
Headlights. He was trying to get from the decision that.
I think also the.
Cause we're just there for clarification questions. We call the tour, but I guess an example of how it would look like a vehicle going out. Also, I think that's something that the store may want to discuss.
Also, the pitch of the driveway is it goes up, that it's pitching to the right as you go up. So tend to push water off and closer to Morrison property, so.
The other piece was.
It showed where like they're crossing the wetlands, which was not.
Yeah, the wetland crossing, the buffer for that wetland crossing is exempt already in our regulations. With the driveway goes up the hill, there was an impact in the buffer right there, which would be the 9.6.
I'm concerned that would like clarification purposes, maybe like potential like screenings.
If we get a report for the, from the conservation commission recommending a type of screening.
That was. They were gonna, they promised they have some.
But because they met that Thursday afternoon. Oh, their comments from their meeting, the conservation committee. Jason Wetland could be best protected through less intrusion to the buffer area with fewer buildings and a revision to the roadway. If the 9.6 is approved for the buffer, it is crucial that the remaining buffer be replaced with native vegetation, especially shrubs suitable for wet conditions. That was their comments from their meeting, not necessarily the sidewalk, but I'm sure some of those comments came from.
When they saw it.
But it seems like those are two different things. One was looking at drainage issues and putting in low, low bushes. And then we have the concern about whether there may be headlights, which would require taller bushes, right?
We talked about.
Buffering that. Right, right. I just wanted to clarify that, yeah.
Yeah, that, that would be a special use term.
Now, the thing on the headlights, I stopped you guys from talking because you couldn't discuss it. I almost wanted to discuss it because when he came around with the truck.
Yeah.
When he got to the point where in front of the house, his truck was way above the height of the house. It's when he started down the driveway, the headlights would hit the house and he was actually, the lights now would go on the way from the house, not facing the house. So the lights wouldn't shine on the house. I guess that's how I saw that. I just, but I couldn't, I couldn't say that because we're not able to discuss that on site.
Right, so the current driveway is not actually the placement of the driveway. If, um, where he would be driving down the hill, he was actually currently driving down in what would be the upside.
But when, that was the point. So if you go farther over, when you make the swing, you go on the driveway, you're actually going to be facing farther away from the house when you go down there. That's because what happened is you would have to get five to the left of the watch and make those headlights hit the house. So the farther you go to the left for that driveway coming down, the more those headlights are going to be aiming to the left of the block going out, which is away from the house. That's that, I mean, that's what I observed on the site, but I, I had to stop everybody from discussing because you can't, you can't.
But, but the thing is, he's going to be cutting that grade way down. If you look, if you look.
But when he starts down the driveway grade, they're churning to where they're facing the wave in the house and not facing towards the house. That was the point, the driveway doesn't, when you go down the driveway, the lights are going to follow the direction you're going, which is away from the house, not at the house. They'll put a bunch of big trees next to the house and the headlights aren't going that way. I mean, they're just putting big trees next to the house.
No, I think there's.
Well, as he makes the curve, he's at the 220 foot level, right? He's coming around here, let's say, and it's the curve and that's your house.
Exactly, the driveway that is installed toward unit.
Yeah, yeah, right. Cause he couldn't, yeah.
That's where I'm saying it's the end.
Oh, on the lower part down low. I thought we were talking about the truck coming down.
He's taking that whole.
Trying to bait the headlights. The tree's high enough, so the headlights, the throttle is here, but if you down with that hole, then when you lower trees at the source, the curve is up there.
But no, it's where the curve is up toward the top, but it's almost down here. So you can.
I said it's.
Here, right, well, here, because once you get down here, you're right, you're going to be shining out. But from here across, let's see where all this impacts.
But that option is over, the lights are over the top of the house. And you actually, the train coming down here, when you're facing the headlights down, that's when you're here, you're not facing the lights towards the house. The light can reach towards the house here, but your elevation 224. And this elevation down here was.
Around the house is like 214, right? 213?
So when the lights are aimed towards the house, you're 10 to 12 feet above the house is what I'm saying. So then when you start down the driveway, that's actually aiming away from the house.
Well, yeah.
I saw that. If you're 214 and you're at 224 in the upper section.
You're 10 feet above the house.
Oh, you're 216.
Yeah, you're.
But you're 10 feet.
Down. Yeah, but when the driveway smokes down, the house is actually turned away from the house. You're no longer pointing towards the house. That's the point I'm trying to make.
Oh, but right there is 216, it's not that, not that. I think there's 216s. Right there. That's, the elevation line is 216, right?
Right, right, right. So we're talking, talking down here. Yeah, 214, 212.
So the 214 is going to shine like, that, that's going to shine like to the house.
Yeah, that's my, that's my comment. I think this.
Yeah, I think, I think they're right.
It's, it's, right here, the elevation line is, is 216. Right there, and that's where the lights are a problem.
Which puts it right in window height.
Yeah, so I think it is.
To make that transition.
I stopped the spoke reading a lot of lines there, but.
And then the upper section, you're getting it on the second story part of it.
Who's on second story?
Of the house.
It's a case.
It's a case, both case.
I don't know if there's second story, I mean, there.
No going on.
Doesn't have to have a. You don't have to have that door. I had a case without a dormer and it would still have second story, it has windows on whole things and it was. Upstairs, yeah. Yeah, it wasn't, it was still second story, two stories.
The gable end points.
Yeah, the other direction.
Right, I don't think you're going to get much of it. I don't think you catch.
Also, we, we want the trees within, want for the trees and levels, right?
It also will stabilize that drop off too, if you put some trees there, right?
Sure.
Where the, where the road drops off from 224 drops down to 216, down to what, 212? Just that slope, having some bushes there or something will stabilize that slope too, right? I mean, if you.
Oh, any, you know, plant with roots.
That's true.
Absolutely. And those, those trees that are there, they're.
Yeah, aside from the ones.
Yeah, we looked at those on the sidewalk, but.
And I forget what was the, how far back from the wetland? We actually be at the bottom of the stabilization. I remember walking and looking and it was pretty tight.
It was, there was like a temporary impact on the slopes of like, well, I think it was almost six feet, was it?
I don't.
That, that looks, yeah, that looks lovely. Yeah, and then, then I think it was like another six feet all up upon the permanent impact that was. I mean, so it's pretty close.
Yeah. And I mean, conservation's comments on it were, you know, reduce the, like move the one house to reduce the essentially unit five, let's to either relocate or eliminate unit five, so that you didn't have to create a wetland impact.
Right.
Buffering.
It would make the driveway going up a little steeper because a wetland boundary, they had to do some kind of cap there.
Yeah, so you chose.
Yeah, that's why the house was a little tiny, that was my.
Which, I mean, if you're going to put buildings there, you don't impact that ledge anyway.
So, or you wouldn't be able to get the businesses of lower level, which completes the whole purpose of the next construction.
Right.
That should be a little bit.
Right, significantly. I mean, I think the application, I'd have a lot less impact than this one does. 500% of the great, great territory. Do you got the direction on how they care about the 9.6?
Not, not too good, I think.
I saw you guys discussing that, you know.
Yeah.
Discussing an alternative.
Yeah.
You would have to resement back is.
Yeah, and it seems that, that the buffer would work best at the bottom of the hill, near her house, right? I mean, that's where the trees would, with any height of like 10 feet, would just take care of the whole problem instead of trying to shield headlights for shooting over the top. If they were closer to her house than, in other words, on the boundary, it would make more sense for that.
Trees, one thing down.
The buffer is the big one.
That's the one they, they have.
5,570 square feet.
That includes, that includes the, the wetland crossing, or the culvert into the driver.
They're looking at this a little bit, so.
That does include 5,570. And that's if they're all passed over here.
Yeah, that one's 54, 40.
Yep, that's right.
Oh, plus 365.
Or the wetland impact itself.
Yeah, right.
But that buffer is exempt from the 9.
Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah, I wasn't even looking at that, looking at them. If you could blast road up through unit five and put, and, and put unit five up near six and make a tighter corner, but.
Well, we, we can certainly take a look at that. I mean, this is exactly the kind of info we wanted to hear from you first. Uh, and, and we'll do that if it, if it makes sense, if it's not going to be, you know, absolute nightmare with, with getting up that slope.
Yeah.
You can, you can make that change and that'll keep part of our recent middle to CMA. But we'll, we'll definitely take a look at that. Because we got to finish on like that. We believe in this one, I mean, back. And what are they?
Yeah, no, it's just that would be part of the road reconfiguration as part of our responses. The hard terms of violence.
Okay.
Which would change the Jameson because of the road.
Yep.
Questions, comments from our sidewalk follow.
Not from here.
Yes, this reply. I mean, since there was no decision making, it's part of the process.
It's all part of the application so that make sure that all the common information there.
All right, and this one I'll open public comment.
Okay. Or against it? We've received her letter, do you have anything new to add? If you jumped in. Just clarification. To Morrison, 68734. Can you run, repeat what the suggestion was for the change of plans?
We didn't make a suggestion on the change of plans. We just posed some of our concerns with regard to the wetland impact or the buffering for the upper, the drive going between five and six.
And what was that again?
That we're concerned about the impact of it and there's no guarantee that a waiver request would be approved on that.
The approval of a special permit to be working the button.
Alternative options to lessen the impact are required under regulations. That to be feasible before we can prove a waiver.
Thank you.
When I'll close public comment.
Are you quite willing?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'll stop you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think in the first, yeah.
Made the motion to continue the application to November 1st. Application number is 234-77-DC-22. Two three four dash seven seven dash D C dash twenty-two back.
Because it's.
It's sister.
Double seven.
Be all right.
What's going on?
Just you're. Thank you very much for your help, folks. Five minute bio break for those that read it.
Why did he look at me?
There you can. Brick stones, it's gonna be Dante's. He goes. Believe it when I see it.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, I saw this video somewhere, guy took a segue. He put these great handoff.
Yeah. That's a big thing out west.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
So you can ride around town of Barrington on a segue.
I don't even, I don't even like biking around town because people do not pay attention. And the amount of times I've almost been hit blocking. Route nine, it's horrible when you're scared.
On bikes, on, on, because you can't see around the corners. So I'm not on route nine all the time.
Yep.
And I'm slowing right down. We get this. I'm, I'm learning about it. It's the younger than me. Yeah, you're three feet into the road. You're ready on the corner. So there's no way you can go around it without going. You have lanes, you don't always come here. So you basically almost gotta stop until you get to the corner to see around.
Well, I, same thing. I drive up here with all the time in between. Uh. One twenty-five and E C L C. You've got. What? Ten turns that are pretty much blind corners there. I can't tell you how many times I've come around a bend and had somebody in the other lane coming at me.
Because they're trying to go around someone. Yeah.
Not even when there's nobody there.
Oh, really?
They're over the yellow line.
See that beauty hill all the time.
Yeah, that's what's going to dawn up. So we're gonna.
Make sure you have the light shot. Just go look at. One twenty-five, potential sites on nine. And see how many people are doing this.
Well, that's all.
I can't do that and try something.
I get this stuff, so it's a problem.
You know, when I thought I'd pick up my phone and see who left me. You don't leave a message. I'm not calling you down. Those, uh, being able to, uh. Big squad would be in, in Maine, and I get out to. And. The person doesn't move, isn't moving at all for them. Or isn't moving into the lane. And they have their head down. With their crown in their hands. And I didn't notice they're weak. And they're, they're testing away.
One that gives me is the scarf. So I'm making a white change. On three times.
Yep.
Starting to get there.
Yeah.
Oh, you know, but then the lights already changed back to the other color and the wall dripped now.
Yeah, nice.
Let's speed it up.
Go along this.
These have been tough decisions, so.
Yeah. Yeah, don't. He's trying to figure, is it, is it in the cooking oil business? Are they all a little? If you put a vineyard in, then I go.
Right. Uh, new application is twenty-six dash eleven dot one dash R C dash twenty-two. S dash S R over header two hundred.
Good evening, Steve. I'm the civil works representative, contributing asphalt. Heather Kicker is actually online. She's out of town right now. Very specific questions she can answer as well. Uh, this application is specific existing is a big year since two thousand and five. And maybe with Sean Hawkins as well, the planner, we talked about codifying existing use that's here in state plan application. There's no addition, additional work being proposed. There's no expansion of the use being proposed. There's no expansion of the, uh. The hours of operation. They do nothing here. Predominantly, they, they store their equipment here. They leave in the morning. They come back in the afternoon, Monday through Friday. Uh, they work essentially, uh, April to November and then they shut down. So the, the purpose of tonight's meeting, the site plan is recommended by, uh, Mr. Hawkins was to come from the planning board. Codify the existing use of the vine for. For a while, uh, site plan application, uh, as well. There is also the, the encroach that's associated with the wetland buffers. There are wetlands on site. Uh, those exist as well. They're all revegetated over the years. The photographs you have right there were taken. Very recently, actually. Or, you know, my voice. And really, the, uh. So that's, that's. The overview is essentially, there's nothing different with this. There's nothing being proposed other than the distinct condition of there now. Uh, I did read through the comments from staff, one of the comments was from the real agent about opening a construction entrance and getting driveway permits. So the. Driveway permit off of, um, Warren Road already exists. Uh, it was actually issued in two thousand and seven. If you guys need copies, if you have copies of them here. So there is nothing being proposed. The driveway is actually, the width was proposed, that then approved. Again, nothing is being asked here. It doesn't already exist. Conservation was some additional. Something with runoff, but again, this, you can see from the photographs, things well, though, vegetated. Uh, there's actually a vegetated berm with some, some piles of stuff along the edge over here, which does direct the water away directly from the wetland. It doesn't have a chance to flow into that. Uh, goes across vegetated grass area. Uh, I think if we were to do anything more than was there now, it would disturb the buffer, which is actually. That's, uh, stabilized over the years and. Stabilized, yes. So in reality, we're asking for tonight is really just the, uh. To get approvals for this thing.
I looked through this one and I. Driven by this for years and I, I guess I don't know. Really. How to respond to it or where to start because the impacts have already been made. They've been made over the years without any. Which I believe, and John can correct me, there have been multiple complaints filed on it. Reports. Issues. There's a long laundry list of. Items that have been cited tied to this pre parcel property.
And one of them was running an illegal contract storage yard, which they holler in trying to make it a legal contract storage yard. The wetland buffers were once restored. One with the valley, because it used to be another driveway that came in before. And it was restored. In, probably seven or eight years ago. And it was still. Which is now, some of that buffer area, they got. We just step. Back a more joints.
Think we need a sidewalk at least.
They'd be on our sidewalk as well.
Trying to specialize. We've been trying to specialize the week after. Now, so.
I mean, I figured out. Does anybody have any preferences on picking a date? We did Monday, Wednesday, didn't we? I believe so. Or for that same day, it's a twenty one.
So nice.
Mining board meeting is gonna be changed.
You know, obviously it lies against next Monday since it's.
Ready?
I know it could be in the air.
Yeah. Wednesday, the twelve.
So I, I can tell you, I'm gonna be, next week is a brutal week because I'm. Uh, I. Global managers, we saw next week, part of next week, not all of next week. It directly will impact my schedule next week. For availability. The twelfth, I can. Probably make work. The eleventh is, is, is a no go for me. The tenth and eleventh, I think.
The twelfth is one for the week after that. I mean, that's.
That's not be cool. We, we don't.
But if you get it, John today.
Yeah. You set it up.
Oh, is that the method?
Like a quarter, fourth thirty, like we've done the last two sidewalks, relatively work for people's schedules.
Their cars go back.
Yeah, November or something.
November.
But it has dark.
We're moving our meeting from the eighteen.
Voting day?
Voting day.
Do you? You said you retired and do nothing.
Yeah.
You want to do the twelfth like four, four, four o'clock? So.
Well.
Yeah, okay.
It's not. The application is complete. There's a whole lot we need to do. So.
Once at the twelve, four P M, I will note it there. Um. So I don't know if yourself will be there and will this owner. I don't know if that's a good time for that owner. She means she's online. Says she's online. Yeah, she is. Yeah, someone. Comment if that time. Works for her or your. In your. Yes, that'll work.
When, when is the twelfth this night?
Okay, cool. Like, you know, so that's like a, that's considered a fellow meeting, a fellow, for the butters can attend, uh, the planning board of the conservation commission. Don't see him this work for me. Are you the owner? I'm in a butter. Good time to work.
Last one took about an hour, right? So we don't need much more than that.
I mean, I'm.
Good for you.
I'm gonna bump it out to five, but I, I understand people work and I know that does create an impact. I mean, it creates an impact in my statement.
The end is recent. Oh, I'm sorry.
Public comment. All right, I'll, you know, we haven't accepted public comment at this point.
How about when, when we open public comment and say, we'll say like what time works for you and then we'll, we'll readdress what time.
Sure.
That would be fine. Okay.
Anything, uh. You've got an application. We want to accept the applications. By the regulations, both the applications.
Okay.
And for a motion to accept two sixty-nine, uh, or I guess I'll make a motion to accept two sixty-nine dash one one dash R C dash twenty-two.
I'll second that.
Sutia? Capilla, all right.
Just go, huh?
Just you're up. So, applications accepted must be. Is there anything else that you need to add, sir?
No, my comments will be addressed up.
Uh, at this time, I'll open public comment. Please come up and up some. Open address.
It's Mr. Ju Young and I live at twenty-two Warren Road. Um, my husband, John, is also here. We've lived in Barrington since two thousand and four. It was actually before, uh, the. Who they go by. Gia or what they go by now. But it was before they had moved in and so we have filed a number of complaints. I, I'm actually surprised to hear that Mr. Hawkins is, was the one that recommended this because I have been going to him with some of my complaints. It's a little. Inflictional for me that he was the one that recommended that they, um. Apply for this, um, because the responses I've been getting, uh, have just been very short, uh, that there is no violation. I haven't seen the pictures that were submitted. Obviously, I drive by this lot every day. We've been making reports to the police very regularly, uh, because there's been a lot of activity over there. I have some pictures. That my husband printed out, um, that are current. That show the wetlands, the wetlands have been destroyed, um. From the time that they moved in. It's just been an ongoing process. Um, I'll turn these pictures into you, but just for reference, they, um. They're, they have a paving business and so they have continued to pave over the wetlands repeatedly over the years. Uh, they do it. On a very regular basis. It was done continually over this summer. There's a line, I don't know if that's the berman that he was referring to, but this line here, they continue, continue to dig this up. They bury things and then they tar it right again. Um, and they move this line back farther and farther and farther, pushing the wetlands back. Um, and that's what confuses me about Mr. Hawkins. He tells me that he drives by and that there are no violations. I don't. Understand how there are no violations when. Wetlands continue to be moved. Um, they have a series of different sheds. This paint shed has been removed from the property. They have some that are in the front of their home now. Someone I think lives in the one in the front yard. Not really sure. They, um. Put. A pool in their yard. Um. They put another shed, I think, that they think that if it's a pool house, I'm not really sure that is how they seem to use it, but. I don't really know what they're applying for because they've been using this property with all of this. Machinery on it for many years. Uh, they don't come eight to five. This machinery is. Coming and going. It's registered to different states. Sometimes they have license plates on them. Sometimes they don't have license plates on them. Um, when it's been reported, sometimes they were parking these on Warren Road and made a police report. They got to bid. Sometimes they're parked at Market Basket. Sometimes there's a dilapidated. It used to be a. Gas station on Route Four. Sometimes it's parked there. Um, so my concerns, our concerns. Are if this was granted, I'm concerned about whether this would be surveyed again when they, um, they used to have a lot of campers. Or RVs and they would have people living in them. Several of them were parked there for prolonged periods of time. Mr. Hawkins. Told us that people were allowed to live in them six months out of the year. Um, people were living in them. Longer than six months. It was like a, an RV park over there. Music playing loud all night long. Um. Variety of different kids. I, I work for, um, the state of New Hampshire for child protection. So it's obviously a concern to me. Kids coming and going, racing up and down the road, no helmets on four wheelers. Um, they don't seem to follow any of the rules of the town or. Any rules period. So they cut down, you can see our, this is our land. I don't know. The boundaries. I'd like to have the land surveyed again if this is gonna happen because I don't. All the trees you can see were cut down. I don't know if those were my trees or their trees, but they've all been removed. Vegetation that he's talking about, that's all been revegetated. I don't know what's been revegetated. Best I can tell, driving by, nothing has been revegetated. Because it's been tarred over repeatedly. The tar keeps getting increased. You can't see it as much because there's a lot of sand on it, but this, when you do the sidewalk, you'll see. Um, it's all asphalt here. Um. I can't imagine that that. Does anything for drainage or wetlands. There's been no. I can't imagine that that does anything for drainage or wetlands. There's been no revegetation. I'm not sure what Mr. Huckins is talking about, that that was restored because I can assure you that this has not been restored, um, in any fashion. These pictures are welcome to have. Oftentimes, I don't know if these are the same trucks. Sometimes they have different names on them. Like every few years, they're painted different colors. For a few years, they were pink. Uh, now some of them are gray, some of them are orange. They went by the, she goes by the name Cooper, they went by the name Stanley. Some of them go by the name Kuchia. There's just a variety of different things that have gone on over the years. In this picture, you can see there's the shed that I guess is the pool house and the above ground pool that was put on the property. We're just super concerned. We don't know what's our property anymore. We don't know what vegetation. Again, I'd like to have it surveyed. I'd like to know what's been cut down. I certainly would like to know what revegetation has been done here. I'm very concerned about runoff, our yard. We've got a well that's in proximity here. Our well is over here, if you can envision where our land is. Our driveway is flooding all the time. I don't know, you know, I'm certainly not an earth scientist, so I don't know the impact of what's happened here, but I, I can assure you that it's not. And our land is impacted by it. And certainly having trucks come and go, be parked here. This is not how it's zoned now. I understand that that's what they're asking for. We don't, we don't want that.
If I speak for the record, we can, Shaky, you're welcome to pass them around, probably for members to look at, and I'm sure the.
And I don't know, over the years, we've been given different information about who to contact. The last person that I was told, I had been talking to somebody at the state and then we were told to contact Mr. Huckins. So like I said, I'm just a little bit confused about, or any concerns I've been hearing. She's been working with them and coming up with a plan to have submitted to the government. Those are our concerns. I appreciate you all listening to this.
David Jeffrey, please answer Barrington. My previous comments applied to this and as I understand it, the wetland buffer's been impacted already without benefit of any kind of approvals. When I was on the planning boards, the town attorney ties the plan where they could not prove like a nine six after the fact. But you can't document the conditions that are required to enact. Certainly eliminates any possibility of, or have an impact on what would have done and had come before in the first place. And it certainly eliminates a butter's influence of what I think is. Thanks.
David, I am. 334, I'll call everybody. I'm a junior, but I should share a driver with them. So I'll bounce exposures around. Every action is a reaction. And there's state violation wetlands on there. There's planes of cargo on there and stuff. And he filled the buffer in. Now it affected me. I get two feet of water in the winter, I don't have any water runoff for summertime. I sound pissed off? I am. And frustrated? I am. And he, this is good, but I'm too on a hedge. That law, I know it is up, is up. I've taken the, uh, back against court. So being to John Huckins to court and walk through it to come to compliance. They could do it. They don't want, gave everything they wanted, but it could come in and thing. So this is state record of the impact it was taking there. And then there was another impact that they didn't care with the state as well as the BOMA. Now they continue to fill it in. I'd say a word, I've got health issues and so, and I know there's a lot of complaints. But when you, I gotta talk with folks at plans, sit close to these for them. We call existing conditions. It is 17 years of violations. I have been making errors up and I'm not beating them up. I tried to get in with Thomas. I had this understanding of, even one day, they're fixing their rail. And one thing for them, and I said, excuse me, that's structural. So I had from auctions, I buy some vinyl ones to wrap around it. I gave them to them. I knew if they go for structural pose, it wouldn't be good. So when I hear existing condition comes up and refers back to his plan, this is what was approved or not. I bought my lawn, they bought their. There is a small envelope there. And if you can poop in for it, but it went through a, grew itself and got a contract inside in there and so. But the, uh, now I got enough. I don't hate Heather. I don't hate Thomas, but Thomas, I don't agree on anything. He did a lot of things over here spontaneously. He's gotten better. But if conditions are there, they're limited. Why are you able to come to this all night here, rules and regulations, none of them enforced? I'm not passionate staff or anything, but over the years, this has gone too far. There's a financial burden on me. Tenants, I, but it's not dollars, boundaries. They landscape my property. Excuse me, that's mine. So I had put a slip, slip fence. This mine is sure, it's no problem. And over the years, this it's a green to itself and walk the driveway, not a normal full action, shared driveway. I ended up spending a lot of money, last my job, moving the driveway over there. So I need one request. The driveway changes is no longer what the state is in lines. They need to redefine the state for the driveway. The town issued a residential driveway on Warren Road. And I pointed out that they applied the driver's warrant's wrong. Residential's 18 feet. Ground Shaw's 30. Then it's part of the regulation too. You need to go 30 foot over there and so it's there. Right now, their driveway more than 30 feet. So not defined. And, um, I'm willing to work, I'm not against them doing it. But they didn't, all, all this. First time I know since I went to the conservation at John Wallace. I'd come over there a couple of years and so, I did all this frustration and stuff. Uh, going back before the, well, then going playing with that red, so like, I tried to run the people's voices up, but that was a mistake. Uh, I'm being honest. I know hate this guy, this guy, he has a tough job, is a tough law, as a builder himself, restrictions with the town. And then I tried to work with him, but I have a strain of it against him. I don't have an arm mic on the head all. I just put the gate up. Because they use it. I may do what's up, but they don't, so I try, once you do the driveway, I get a white line right down the property line, a 30 by 50 right away, they use freely. But they bought a mail box, they bought other vehicles, trying to get business from me and stuff with my tenants. It's not me personally. I have a hardship. Deal with it. This is what I think, and Sandy, when the same thing over and over, expect a different results. But if it looks like a duck, talks like duck, it's a duck. His conditions on that property and they're tough. And I'm willing, I took it to court at my expense and showed them, listen, you can do this. It didn't work out. It's getting worse and worse. So now that water you see, that's what happens in winter. It freezes, whereas I before. As I've lived there before, there's been 18 accidents with mergers and stuff. So this is had enough. I did not write these problems on myself. I tried to write all the rules up. I took oath. I sat in a seat. It's a tough job, but he's a tough girl too, so go ahead, go ahead. And I will help work, I know I can, but I got nothing. I don't want to do anymore. And I like the plans back and the pictures.
Yeah. Friday and December. Oops. You don't believe that. I get one. Do you want to discuss some time? Oh yes, was there the 5 p.m. work? I didn't know. I worked at Dan had issue with.
I'm still alive, I'll be there. I play my name when I wake up.
Going back to those second.
So Wednesday the 12.
About that. Does that work for the, see that you're in line?
Yes.
Will that 5 p.m. on Wednesday 12 work for you if you come here? Friday?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I thought like she had last meeting here before. Yes.
Can I just, I have some questions to pay you.
Yeah.
5 o'clock works for.
Okay.
So what you guys looking at right now, this is a current survey, current weapon mapping as well. We did overlay that from the weapon mapping that was done in the original plan that was there. It provides to you guys the change in the weapon, uh, planation boundaries. This is insignificant. It's essentially the same boundary that was there before. So what you're looking at on the plan that you have right now is a current boundary survey, existing additions and equipment. The butter had indicated whether they filled or not, it'd be, the weapon buffer has been impacted and has been impacted for a while. But based on the information that we have from the original survey that was provided, as well as what we've done with the weapon scientists, uh, there's been no additional weapon buffer, I'm sorry, weapon impacts from, will be seen witnessed. Mr. Jared did point out in the Twitter as well, there was a violation that the state had, that was brought to the state's attention. And that was resolved. You do have a closure letter from the state of New Hampshire for that violation. And the reasons, and Mr. Huckins is the one who actually working with us, Mr. Huckins, that, that, that was the best way to go about this. What we did, what we're doing now is, is what was requested of us to provide a site plan, a site plan. So the town's not asking, the town's not working, but it's in any way, shape or form. They were asking them for guidance and that, and they're providing that to us. So, and, and my conversation with, with, with others as well, as they're willing to work with everybody to work, they have a business that is zoned correctly. And they do use the zone, the zone correctly for regional commercial. Um, so their use is allowed use. It's not, we're not asking for any waivers. There's no variances. There's no exceptions noted here. So in reality, what we're asking for is, as you can well know, is a use that's been used for a while. We're trying to codify that in the cycle. So that's the purpose.
So just for my own clarification, they had a violation. It was addressed at the state level. And now we have a whole new impact to the buffer, like they went back, mitigated their violation and then repeated it?
No, so the state of New Hampshire has no weapon buffer requirements here, period. What they had was they had a wetland, they had a wetland violation which they resolved.
Right, which would also in that they would understand that the town has wetland buffers.
That's correct.
And follow wetland buffers. And then even knowing that through the fact that they've already been to court on this, they're, they then proceeded to.
What, what happened is when there was another driveway put in, it crossed over the wetland buffer and it was brought across. That's when I very first started working for the town. We got the state involved, get that wetland cleaned up. I even got a plan from Orbison Drew. I think it was, might, might be GM, GM Chisbo, he was the guy. Showing that, that buffer was restored, that wetland was restored. And I even got pictures of showing that buffer line all hayed and restored. Since then, that other driveway got widened back after it got restored before.
I'm just telling, that's the facts. And I get, I got the pictures and I got the plans to show it. I gotta file that.
Mine's only that big.
I mean, that the sidewalk will be telling, but that's concerning.
Yeah.
It, so this is not hiding anything. You guys know that there's an issue out here and it's part of here. So then I think that was in a good direction from the town was, you know, we, we, you have, you have an issue, let's bring it from the plane board and have this conversation. You know, so yes, is there a violation today? Yes, right now you have not approved a site plan that has the allowed use for the weapon buffer impacts. Eric, it isn't allowed use and there's been a contracted yard. That's what they're asking for.
And for the past year, they haven't been jumping their vehicles on site, other than a few times where I stole about it. When I was told about it, I went out and checked and they were actually doing work on their property. So they have a right to bring their equipment on their property when they're working. So that's what he said that, he said there was no violation. I get there, there was no trucks or they were working on the lot, which technically is not a violation, no different that they are working on your driveway.
Maybe not when you go by, but I live there. I see him there all the time.
Okay. All right, they walk time block on the 12.
Yep, so looking for a continuance to, uh, motion to continue to October 12th at 5 p.m. at 3:36 over conference. Is that right?
Here. Here.
You're gonna do that?
Yes. We'll leave, we'll leave on Warren.
It's, yeah.
You can continue to the sidewalks, sidewalks, that can still remain.
Right.
That's what I was considering. And she was questioning, and I was continuing.
It's not, it's not another meeting, it's a continuation.
Well, no, so right now usually you'll specify the next meeting you better have in, so you're continuing to both times just to make sure it's clean.
Which I'm assuming the next meeting will be January, uh, yeah, January.
Nice try.
Or in session.
I have one question though first. Um, I'm looking at the, um, boundary with 22 Warren Road.
Team. Sorry, I missed what you said, John.
I was looking at the boundary between 22 Warren and you. Those monuments, I see one or two monuments. You must have noticed those when you did your plot plan.
Yeah.
So they can easily find those if they want to, okay. Figure out.
We can flag them up if you.
Yeah, flag it up and then they can see with the.
Wetland buff is supposed to be too, so they can see the total impact to the buffer.
Well, the, the wetland buffer is in the gravel area.
Well, can you, can you spray paint it or something?
It's kind of not, so you don't see how much of the impact.
It's chalk paint because it'll leave a lasting impact with here. I mean, that's just, there's 100 simple ways to.
Right.
Get red mark, it's all concealed.
Side to side. But I think actually.
So we have to vote, we have to vote. Yes.
Okay.
Bro call.
Sutiai.
Capiola.
Driscoll.
That's your eye. Let's see everyone on the 12th at 5 p.m.
All right.
And then back here on the first. Case is committed, leaving.
You still with us?
We don't have, we had that choice.
People, thank God.
Next one, 220 dash 54.7 up seven back, one dash RC dash 22 back, that's seven.
LST's New Falls Realty. Which operated used to be in oil storage facility. Every time. So we're building all the planning on behalf of LST's. See you too. So before you have a applications for the use of lots thirty nine two forty four icing road, icing circle to be used as a used cooking oil storage and processing facility. For the purpose of resort, recycling used cookingware. The process has been deemed like manufacturing, though it is a highly green process utilizing virtually no electricity and no real labor to speak of. Or really just processing, you know, letting it settle out naturally. Much if you picture salad dressing. Water separates, oil separates, solid separate, then you just put it in different tanks. It's then sold, the oil sold. The water and solids are then either provided to wastewater treating plants to feed bugs, uh, which are used in the ana- anaconda processing and wastewater. Or they're used for fertilizer or hay farmers things of that nature. But it is a process, so it's going to be necessary to get the ladies with. Uh, the facility will be monitored by the Hampshire Department of Environmental Services and will be permitted by them. So the request you have in front of you is to approval of that use subject to receiving that permit from the Department of Wastewater.
Wastewater?
Uh, yeah, wastewater. Hampshire Department of Wastewater.
Holding in storage. I want you finishing.
Okay. So that, that is the basics of what we're talking about. We hold about ten thousand gallons to start of oil and water combined. The fluid is non-hazardous, non-flammable. Uh, slash point on what on used cooking oil is typically north of five fifty, six hundred degrees. Uh, I was gonna bring in a nice little cup of it and put a cigarette in, cigarette out in it and make a point. But I figured that's probably not the way to go. The application was vetted, uh, had you invited to be all seen right now. Chief Walker to provide some additional questions. Uh, we did speak with the the Hampshire State. Excuse me. Uh, we did, we did talk with the, uh, Hampshire State Fire Department specifically. We talked, and we talked at the state level, uh, uh, since we talked to the state. Uh, and ultimately been able to determine, uh, what the requirements are for an internal internal storage of used cooking oil, which is a flat, uh, class three B liquid. And we would be able to hold per fire code in a non-sprinkle building approximately twenty three thousand gallons of used cooking oil. We have no intention of pulling anywhere near that amount. And that code would actually supersede any code from the Hampshire Environmental Service, from Department of Environmental Services.
Sorry. How does that supersede DES because?
There's gonna be higher. They would allow us to store more.
Right, but they're also gonna require significant permitting process.
They are gonna require permitting, but in terms of the level of storage, which is where Chief Walker's query was um, on how much we would be storing. He had a couple of concerns about dealing with used oil. How much would there be? How would it be contained? And once he looked at that, he was concerned of when their caps would kick in and how much could be held inside. And the fire code, given that specific structure is actually gonna cap in well before anything a DES would essentially say, no, you can't store more. You can't store that much in there. So his, his concern about that essentially set the threshold at about twenty three six right now. So while DES will still be coming in and actually supporting and confirming that our containment plan, which, which is really a couple of different phases to our secondary containment plan. Is effective. We will not be exceeding anything on fire code, just because that's the right way to play. For that specific site. The containment prep plan itself, I think, just because it's relevant to this conversation and any conversation when we talk about oil and environmental. For smaller spills, uh, the facility, the way it's designed, uh, has a lip of about twelve inches on the foundation, which essentially will serve to give buffer during the first two thousand or so gallons of oil. After that, um, there is a, a silt fence that is around the entire outside of the property. And it is got, it is countered to about a hundred and seventy degrees heading towards, uh, the septic area. Uh, which will be augmenting and submitting as part of our overall containment plan to the, um, to the state. And hopefully with their approval, they'll say, oh, okay, that's, it's all gonna go here and restored there temporarily while we purchase replacement tanks for their catastrophic loss. Um, and then we would just either restore it, absolute worst case scenario. It's there anyways. Uh, it's fertilizer. It's not really a environmental hazard in any way, shape or form. That being said, it's also my product and money and I have no desire to have it sit there. So from that perspective, we suck it back up. We put it in the tanks. We continue along our very little way. There's currently, as of yesterday, approximately twenty five thousand gallons worth of storage at two trailer supply outlets within fifteen miles of the facility. So getting replacement storage here very quickly would not be an issue, nor would be, uh, any sort of real issue to get a pump here. So we don't see that point up would be a huge big deal. Given the, the road is a private road and the placement of this specific and the grade of the land is such that it is, it does not look or seem to be that there would be any change in a significant cleanup required. Or there's even a catastrophic failure. I don't think that's a big issue there. Uh, I think we've done a lot to kind of impact that, including eliminated the larger site that we originally considered, unit forty uh, on the plan, just because we prefer the contour of this land and our ability to contain it better. We've held off on, uh, while we had discussions with Department of Environmental Services. Our final permit will request will be going in upon receipt of this condition approval, not prior, because we don't own the facility at this point. We're not gonna start making any changes that they would like to have us do until after we have your okay to actually operate the business. The business will typically run between seven AM and six PM Monday through Friday, but it'll be primarily lights out operation. Our truck will be out servicing customers, getting oil, bringing it back. Uh, the existing lights, uh, will likely be sufficient for anything we're doing in there, uh, but from a safety perspective, should we have any need for it, uh, we would obviously put them in right away. Being back is always kind of been a passion of mine, so we're, we're gonna do it right if we get some people here. Then actually need to do anything or need to be here. I think it's what's significant hours, but to start it's gonna just be. That is, uh, the application. So how can I answer any questions for you all?
Hey, I have a Whitney of questions. This is my world. Oh, good. What is the largest container size that you can have?
Right now we're three thousand. I could see us if we could keep the, the top of it lower, um, top of it small enough to remain within, so going as high as five thousand, but no higher. The space isn't really that large. Um, it's only half of the building.
Right. And secondary containment for it, uh, all oils under NHDES have to have a means of secondary containment.
Up to a hundred and ten percent.
A hundred and ten percent of volume of the largest tank on site.
Yeah.
And are you trying to, are you claiming that the, um, square footage of the building is what you're utilizing this?
No, the calculation I'm doing right now is the combination of a walled off piece of the building with a two level cinder block cutoff that I'm using where beyond my truck is gonna be pulled into. That's gonna be then cocked to the wall. No cock to the floor, excuse me. So it'll essentially be a sixteen inch or so rise all the way around that half of the building and then sealed with plastic on one side with a, um, a fiber board on one side. Cocked and waterproof everywhere else and with a door with a the door will be, uh, cinder block on cinders uh, with a foam underneath a vinyl to kind of make a sealed barrier there. And, uh, ability to roll it back and forth so you can get in without it's been. Then obviously that's subject to the DES accepting that, but if a catastrophic failure were to occur. Then in that case, all those materials would burn. Then you have the catastrophic failure of the, the burn outside, which we would augment, uh, uh, augment every eighteen months or so as needed. So that doesn't go any further than that silt fence.
And you have to have an engineered SPCC plan for the state. That would be a requirement.
Yeah, waste water has not indicated that yet, but if they do, obviously they'll need that.
That wouldn't be wastewater, that's NHDES. So NHDES will.
Well, BES division of wastewater.
Yeah.
Right, I'm not splitting hairs with you.
Right, the
Yeah.
Land use side of NHDES would require an SPCC, so you have to have a spill prevention control and countermeasure plan.
Yeah.
And it has to be engineered and approved for the site.
Right, and I would have to understand what the volume requirements are.
Yeah.
On that and maybe choose to go down the path of either getting that engineering or if the economics aren't there, keeping the volume such that it wasn't required. If there's no barrier.
Your tank size is already gonna put you
Yeah.
pretty much over that threshold.
Used cooking oil is a funny thing.
What's that?
Used cooking oil is a funny thing. Yeah. The, the amount of it that they're still figuring out, it's actually been kind of surprising. As we've gotten into it a little bit.
Bio diesel's always a great option.
Well, that's, we're not going any further than that. We're not, I don't have any interest in going.
That far down.
I don't wanna blow anything up, um, in a constant with, with chemicals dangers.
It's all this question. So the secondary containment was a big question on mine. That your general statement, just so you're aware, like when you talk about like even if it reaches out, if there's no harm.
Yeah.
It's not from an environmental standpoint, that's not an accurate statement.
No, you know, it's funny you bring it up. I've got, I've got a partner that's gonna be coming into this at some point down the road and he's, uh, he's a little more old school. Was I just saying that?
Go with that. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I feel it.
Okay.
He's also a little concerned about the other money, but we're doing what we think we got to keep it. Supposed to be.
Yeah. I think those are the big things and I know you said you would want an approval here, but I would definitely make an approval here as a condition, a conditional approval based on you receiving your permits.
Yep.
From them.
And that's all I'm asking for. I just don't want to forward on the, on the site in advance of that.
This wouldn't be in time.
Yeah. Right, but I don't want to sign leases and stuff like that.
You said part of your containment is a silt fence. What is your maintenance plan for your silt fence?
Uh, I think I'm currently targeting every twenty four months to go back out and refill it with the, uh, go to the local tree guys. I haven't retained which ones yet.
Okay.
See if I get their wood chips and just go around that way.
Your silt fence is never gonna be accepted as. Can't do you. From an house, then they're not gonna want it to leave the building.
Okay.
So your containment is gonna have to hold it within the building and then if it does, they're gonna be looking for onsite remediation. You're gonna have to have booms that, um, will soak up the oil. You're gonna have to have enough material in there, which applies, so your SPCC plan
Yeah.
is all gonna be contingent upon that and it's gonna be signed off by an engineer in order to do that. So you're you're.
We'll take a look.
Silk fence is not even gonna be a concern.
Reportable spill, at least.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and it's reportable within an hour.
Yeah.
Of making, so I think that was the only other question I had is like, if you did have something that, um, breaches, if, if the site's unoccupied, what's your plan to do it? Is it like water bugs, jigs? How do you, how are you catching any material that would potentially leak or leak?
Oh, you mean anything that would come out? We have some water. Right now we're gonna go with water alarms. But they're audible right now.
Right.
Uh, whether or not that's gonna meet the standard, um, I'll know when I sit down with those with wastewater and perhaps some other things.
You can get them soaked. Send an alert right to you.
Perfect, too.
Right, so.
There are some creative solutions that.
Great.
Now, I have to imagine the technology's gotta be there for a lot of that.
And, and you can do them for very short runs.
Sorry. Less than a grand to. That helps a hundred dollars. That's the way to hear.
Quick question, you mentioned twenty thousand gallons. I, I can't read this chart, but I, when I read electronic, it seemed to be it was more like thirteen thousand.
It is thirteen, you're allowed to double it in certain circumstances. Um, of which these foods will apply. You'll actually see there's a footnote on there. Where's that question?
Can't see it.
Actually, no, I it's a, it's a copy of a copy of a copy, Eric.
That's a fact, though, issue, like, uh, you know, it's gotta be met, can't.
Yeah.
It's not a plan of what's combustible, so it's having.
Yeah.
Back to it once.
Yeah, no, absolutely. We'll meet it on all bases, um, in all. And if you think about it, these terms, one of those three thousand tanks is actually gonna be holding water and water and so from that perspective, uh, we're not gonna hit your ten thousand gallons on site. Because that's a separated, that's gonna be holding really the fertilizer.
The what does it count and say?
Okay.
Yeah. It does until it's separated, right? Uh, so I understand your point, but as a flammability concern, it's really the separation tanks, which is three of, uh, at smaller, like fifteen hundred gallons.
Totally.
Plus the and then the oil, pure oil, which is gonna be possible.
And I'm assuming everything else would be bottom of the wagon.
Yeah. We have to do the whole record keeping as part of those. We're comfortable, we go. Right, if it's, it's not a, that's a waste issue, it's gonna be a double waiting issue. Yeah. And actually I think that hauling is required as well. Just one second.
Yes. The other questions? Sorry, this is, I geek out on this here, so it's.
Been, I'm going to, I'm going to.
Same issue.
And making sure like you don't, it doesn't reach out of the facility is important because that's where that's where you end up with.
Those weird problems.
Yeah, that's where you end up with the if it's roadside because someone's gonna cross something home if they shouldn't.
I was just not sure that that's controlled.
Yeah, I don't know if that's a problem.
So I just had a question. Um, you were gonna move to forty. Um, is that it? You would purchase the building or do you rent the building?
No, I was gonna move to forty just because it was a little bit larger.
But you would have owned it, not mounted it.
No.
You're right.
It's just what it had, it was more square.
So any of this configuration, you have to work with owner of the building.
Yeah. Yeah, no, now.
For containment.
Several times.
Yeah.
Yeah, and continue to speak and if there's something that I'm not going to jail for anybody. And this is not where I got, I got a perfectly good income already doing something else. So if this isn't gonna work, I can always go back to that.
Okay, so this is your hobby.
Well, it's not a hobby. We're gonna go give this a real shot, but we're we're gonna give it a shot. If it works, it works. And if it doesn't, then, you know, it's a back to the old beans. Yeah, that's just something I wanna do something different.
You would like a motion or I don't know, I'll make a motion to approve the application. Two twenty dash fifty four dot seven dash one dash RC dot twenty two dash S R in a thirty nine. This corner, Alice, who knows, uh, has complete. Dash. Are you saying second?
A lot of dashes in there.
Bro call. No. I want, just one quick question.
Yeah.
There's a note here, light manufacturing to be allowed in all buildings on site. You're doing this for the entire?
So staff would recommend that. Initially, we've, this is the second applicant that we've recommended for light manufacturing. That almost welding darkness. I mean, obviously different business, but if all the all uses in light manufacturing, we thought we being, I talked with.
I just wanna make sure that.
Yeah. In the future, for, since on the original site, I didn't have any uses and so everybody coming back, it seems like this area is being drawn for people that wanted to do the light manufacturing.
But the use that he had was for like a contracted story, bolts.
Yeah.
But it didn't list like manufacturing.
So we're doing it, what we're doing, we'll cover.
That was what the recommendation was. That's what I would recommend is you approve it for that and then each one like even the stuff with the fire code and all the stuff with DES, they would have to meet all that stuff to get permitted. It's just that if someone comes in for light manufacturing and they meet all those specifications, couldn't they allow that as that use? And if someone said light manufacturing, when that was in here originally, and if you look at what the requirements are with all the parking and everything else, that would more than meet it. So you probably would have granted it then. That would more than meet it, so you probably would have granted it then.
In general. Most was the thirty, unit thirty nine.
That's why I say, generally, I would agree, but this is not the time for that approval, because this is specific to advocate to. Mister Mello's independent bioenergy collection, not the entire site, I think it should come before.
So you have Al come in and make an application to have.
Yeah, let let the owner come in.
Light manufacturing for the entire site, this is.
And then you guys can prove it that way, okay.
Right, this is an application.
So we'll have that conversation within the unit thirty nine. This is keeping a few of them, you're not of, you know, that whole thing that they were talking about. Each unit, a custom does to whatever an applicant wants, so it's not like every single one's built the same, they're all built a little bit different. To to meet those custom needs, yes, it's something that needs stuff that are in there, some of these collector guys have it's unbelievable.
The gas, the auto, this old auto guy is so cool.
Oh, yeah. Got a little gas station built inside with a sign on it. An old air pump, the old antique gas pumps, everything else, it's all set up, you go in there, you think you're in this own little world. And he's got all this old paraffin earlier stuff that goes with the old guys, nice epoxy floors going down through, it's unbelievable.
All right, uh, any other?
Thank you.
Another guy that's got. So in application, I have no access to that.
Boys in their toys, right?
Yes.
That's what it is, I I'm in, I want to go too.
I recommend the sidewalk to their guys.
So yeah, so you seconded it, so now roll call for.
What are we doing?
Sick in the.
Yeah, the L Y.
Trisculli.
Tessie, right.
So most applications accepted approved.
They're in public comment.
You're getting there. Okay. Um, is there any other comment from the board, anything?
Andy, does it need to be ventilated?
Um, not really.
Okay, no, I, you're the expert on that.
Yeah, the threshold for oils is like it basically could be dripping from the ceiling and it still would fall within the P E S. So what's an acceptable limit?
I'm just thinking about the the people around them, you know, like somebody does have that nice car outside in the driveway. All of a sudden he comes out and.
Yours is going to all be contained and it's natural, yeah, natural separation, it's allowing granitational separation.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
It's not a recognized jar.
It'll be like the fish chunks and chicken chunks from the bad.
Yeah, that's a major motion here.
By the way, you need to read the weight line.
No, well, we, we're, yeah, we still have public comments, so. Public comment.
Don't want to turn it on.
Everyone's gotten dead. I'll close public comment.
The waiver, um, the applicant is requesting waivers from the site plan because the site plan has already been.
Oh, great.
If you like, I can go ahead.
Yeah.
Yes, please. The department to have all site plans shall be prepared and stand by professional engineer, boundary monument. Boundary monuments shall be certified by a licensed surveyor for section three point one point one. Site plan review. Not granting the waiver, unless your hardship to the applicant, granted, would not be conscious of the violation.
So moved second.
Roll call, roll call.
Capella, I.
Triskulli.
Tessie, right.
I would like to make sure we scratch the light energy type front. Used to be allowed, but allowed it up to allow this to the in all buildings. Now. In our buildings on site.
Take it, just confirm that hours of operation taken from the applicant until Monday. Monday to Friday, seven A M to six P M. Any other.
Um, notice something, this decision is initial upon full um. All conditions met through. Any and all state agents that is for other regulatory company. That's a clearly broad condition, yeah, I want to make.
Can you narrow that a little bit?
Every, any or all? Any or all, right, anybody that has jurisdiction over your property. Paranosis.
Yep.
Like which is it, I'm assuming it's all N H D S, but there's multiple divisions, multiple.
N H D S is in there.
Right, like whoever else, I'm sure there's somebody I'm not thinking of initially, by environmental personnel.
Like it's been a separate note for to meet fire codes?
For regulatory company bodies. Second.
Capella, I.
Wake up down here.
Well, who's the most on me?
Second.
We should have staged this one, we're so. Motion seconded by the crystal. Roll call the.
Miss S U G I.
You should cut off at ten P M, I guess.
Yeah, like getting a little punchy, let's go.
Just keep going so we don't get. You want to read those decisions? Yeah, I got it.
I thought you said both those together, I didn't really sense.
We've gotten better.
You are, I'm failing you, sorry. All right, um. This is a notice of decision is additionally approved for the application referenced above. Approval for proposing operation and use pushing oil storage or recycle business like manufacturing waivers. They approved hours of operation on Monday through Friday, seven A M to six P M. Um, light manufacturing to be allowed on site. Um, I will get the exact words in many minutes, meeting minutes, but any and all regulatory governed bodies. For all conditions determining from. And. The board for giving waivers of their departments have all site plans prepared. And by professional here, boundary monuments probably certified license surveyor in section three point one. When we cite primary location. You'll be mailed.
Congratulations.
All right, cool.
Well, you can stay and watch the rest of the meeting.
Kind of see a lot once every five years or so.
Uh, Mike Bass calls, I'm representing in uh, C R K moments and Buddy Happy. Uh, for the amend the site review to add outdoor events, uh, fifty five K by what.
Think this is pretty straightforward. So motion to accept the application completely.
Second.
Sorry, second.
Really fast.
See how fast it can get.
Good luck. That fast.
It's a good try though.
I know.
Appreciate the effort.
I don't think they noticed we could get out of here.
General conversation comments from the board concerns.
All right, notice the decision.
I think the only concern I have is same words, fire chief, I mean. I know that we're talking about. So whatever. Parking lot, if any parking on one twenty five can be a problem, right, you got a pretty good fit sized parking lot, but we have a big event. It's gonna be hard to fit everybody in.
Right, we have overflow parking to the. Hit another forty to fifty cars to back to the lot, um, where our loading dogs are if needed, otherwise we just turn them away. Usually put old captains right there at the entrance to the building when we hold an event.
And.
Uh, so if we see the parking lot getting too big and or too swollen, uh, we'll start sending cars running a little bit.
You know, that's the biggest.
All right, and we were, um, waiver request to address checklist in section one point five point two. Site plan regulations.
I was like, keep going.
Uh, before you. What is one point five something?
Um, not calling out the checkup.
On the tone check, okay.
Sometimes people, um, we've, people have done this waiver request. I believe there was another one too, because they're using the reasonable justification for that. That's that, they're in the existing plan. But it's part of the reflection list.
I I I make a motion that we uh, waiver requirements of one point five point two. Uh, not written in waiver with code, not serial, actually for the applicant, granted the waiver, not the contrary, it's driven the testing regulation.
Um, this time all of them public comment. Plus public comment.
I make a motion, uh, we approve application, uh. Two two zero dash forty seven dash R C dash twenty two dash H I. S R.
S U G I. Capella.
For approving it, because not proving it would.
Be a contact funding.
Contrary to. It complies with the. Yes, it complies with regulations and not approving it would be very good.
The S U G I. Capella.
Triskulli.
Tessie, right.
Yes, that's like your only decision.
Approved application, um, for the, the approval for change of use, added use of. In the regional commercials on just. Parking on Caleb, I was issue, it's not the nature of the event yet, but the town will require them to install legal no parking signs. That means there's promise to be for enforcement notification, any change of site. Our application will be by planning board and approved waivers, I expect to first one. He does like man, um, so she's the requirement to issues checklist section one.
Granted, all these. And you have to thank us for the next free night out.
Yeah. I I mean, I hope Buddy's giving you a whack over.
We could have put that in our motion. Yeah, so it's the cost of it.
Uh, the building permit might be in there. Yeah, there it is.
Yeah, okay, I missed it.
Hundred and fifteen thousand.
Okay.
So. Right, should we continue this for the next meeting? Good evening, thank you for your patience.
You could just wait a couple minutes and I'm gonna come back.
Should be an easy one, it doesn't like you have.
Oh, no, now we're all angry.
Class six roads are always tough.
Well, we always pitch him to Joyce's crowd.
Okay, actually now that I'm on the.
Wait, wait, you can go home. My son did that to my wife about a month ago.
Always stinks when you should go open the door.
It was. You'd have to hold that hole. All right. Private or in a, um, private road control for. Um, map one, three lots, sixty four. Now, it's a declaration to the select board. And it, it looks like you have a sweat equity proposal.
Yes.
Seems like most of it is either trenching or. Material, film material.
I'll, I'll give a little background, they actually worked with the road association out there, and the road association said to heat foot and grab them on the road and not hitting the ditch line. It's not serving any purpose, roads keep washing out, so they came up with a scope of what they wanted for ditch lines to be fixed. Um, and the scope of work, it's. Could exceed the ten percent, but they guarantee you to do at least ten percent of it. And they're going to document that value with the road association, it's part of their approval, they're actually, I think they wanted you to bond the work too or something that was positive. It was something.
Uh, yes.
Yeah, so, so anyways, and then the road association is the one that's documenting the stuff and they're really interested in getting this fixed and. I think it's really good that the road association is stepping up and working to say, is what we really need going on instead of putting the town as the one that's always been.
That's great.
Actually, I mean, that road's come a long way.
And now they're looking at.
I was just gonna say that, I started selling property there about twenty years ago and it's a whole different story nowadays, they totally really.
I lived there forty years ago.
I remember how it was twenty years ago, and now they're getting into the details, here's what we really need to fix to get there instead of, well, before it just needed everything everywhere.
The very first property we ever bought in that development, it was so bad at the time. That when you drove down it, your voice, your vocal cords actually shook, so you had this shaking voice the whole time of arriving on the road, it was wrong.
When mud season was mud season. I mean, yeah, it's way better than what we said.
I mean, I, I think the first time I drove down was two thousand twelve and that road is. Infinitely better than, and I I questioned if I was luckily had a truck, truck, or I had a car with a. Car at the time, and I was wondering if we were going to make it back out of there.
Okay, here we go, ten years later, and we need to vote on a class six road. Okay, here we go, ten years later, and we need to vote on a classic road.
That's reminiscent.
Oh, right, Bob.
I mean, I reviewed the proposal, I, I thought it was well put together, I mean, it, it was very specific with lot numbers, with footage, with yardage, for the most part, or not quite yardage, but.
Beat you guys up a lot.
It's one of the better.
Right.
Um proposals that I've seen, so, yeah.
We're trying to get a better system as far as that goes, and I felt bad for applicants, because we kept asking for things, but it's all.
The application came in like two months ago, we also need this, we also need this, we also need this.
So it looks good, are we all ready to make a motion?
Yes, we'll make a recommendation.
To the select board to accept, accept the proposed, um speech equity proposal and. And make a level improvements to the red.
This would break the decision voting to fifteen inch color and.
Well, all that trenching.
To make a certification, second.
Yeah, such I.
Capella Y.
Triscali.
Tessie, right.
Yeah, this kind of should be a template for people.
Now, is there any reason we have golf?
You have all of them, I think it was.
The theme for thing, I don't know, sold them out, but.
I was sorry, it's confused when I was.
When I saw it, Bunford Road.
So what happened is, they had to record something in the registry of deeds, so the law, the road association already existed, and they didn't have anything before, they, they wanted to know what they. So I gave them a couple samples, which was one of them.
Yeah.
Then they grow one up, it's on shores, with that sitting type of wording, and got it recorded, so it's in the registry of deeds now, so that half the stuff I need to, I can use to develop. Okay. Cause there's also, uh, when does he rush and bump for.
Yeah.
I sent him, I sent him, here's, here's what I received in the past, that worked, and it was like, they basically. The first guy holds the wheel and everybody else just keep doing it, you drive that.
That was my question.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you guys for the patience. Thanks, have a great day.
Yeah, please, we're.
Sorry, that's probably.
Only that to all the, to the applicant, and the painting, send it back, these simple. I knew, with the new wording for what they had for Longshore Association.
I didn't say it.
There's no way.
Is there anything else we need to repair?
The template, they didn't.
There is something, so.
I know, I did look at that thing, you can build a two bedroom house these days for a hundred.
Think about what you want to change or add, and if anything you want to touch for that zone, the. Well, we're gonna have, hopefully have one. Done, that's twenty fifth, but we're gonna be working on, those procedure I'll also have there for you to review.
Motion to ensure?
Yep.
Second.
A second.
Such I.
Capella Y.
Triscali.
Tessie, right.
I will notice Joyce, that's the first one you said.
Yeah, bye.
You guys are so quick over there.